Yeah, good. Today is November 16th, 2020. Let's see, we got about, what, 40 days to Christmas? So if we are on your shopping list, you need to get at it. Anyway, we're glad that you're here tonight. We're always appreciative that you're here because we know that you have busy lives. So we appreciate the time that you're spending with us and we hope that you find your time valuable. It's the tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We begin with a couple of things. We're going to have the pledge. We're also going to have a prayer by Chaplain Taylor. Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. This is a solemnizing prayer. That's a legal term and that means that this is for the commissioners. It's not for you, it's for us, what we do here. We seek wisdom because we're trying to do what's in the best interest of everybody in the county and that's an important thing. We don't take lightly. So Chaplain Taylor, commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, thanks for this day. Provide for us. Thank you for an opportunity we can come tonight and come in behalf of the county commissioners. Pray you'll bless them and give them the knowledge they need tonight, this meeting tonight. I thank you for the dedication that they have of what they do to your Lord and their love for Rowan County, Lord. Pray you can just be with us tonight. Thanks for the privilege we have to be here tonight on our prayer request tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is sancta, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
April, I didn't ask, we have Judy on yet? Let's wait a second. What's that? Oh, excellent. Excellent, thank you. She in?
She doesn't have video on.
Oh, she doesn't. Judy, can you hear us? Judy, are you on? I hate to start without her. She says she's trying. Let's go ahead and start with preliminaries. So I've got some changes to make to the agenda. I've got an item to add to consent agenda from Don Bringle for the church event. And so the church event at the plaza, that'll be consent item number, letter T, as in Tom. And then Commissioner Klusman has a resolution that we're going to add and I'll do that as item 12A, 12A. Any other changes to the agenda? All right, if there aren't any, do we have a motion to approve the agenda's amended?
So move.
Motion? Jim, second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So move.
Greg and Jim, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Yes.
We substituted the consent agenda and so we just approved the old one. We just made sure we substituted the amendment.
Yeah, we did. We've got a new agreement. It was item Q, if I recall.
It is.
And so we got a new agreement. Sorry about that, Jay. So we'll substitute that on item Q and do we have a motion to substitute that?
So move.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda's amended?
So move.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Jay. Sorry about that. All right. We've approved the minutes. We've approved the consent agenda. Do we have anyone for public comment? No, anyone, April?
We'd like to invite any of our remote participants. If you'd like to participate at this time, you can use the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're joining us by phone.
See Judy's on. Welcome Judy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Can hear you too. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that we approved the minutes.
Was I interrupted by counsel?
Yes, I think he interrupted your train of thought, but I don't think we approved the minutes.
Well, it's not hard to derail me, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
In a second. Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a guest indicating they'd like to speak. Mr. Benson, you have the floor.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, April. Good evening, commissioners. This is George W. Benson of the Rowan County Board of Elections, a member. And first of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for being fully supportive of the 2020 election this year. As everyone realizes, this was a very difficult election to have and we appreciate the support that commissioners gave us. The second thing I'd like to do is thank the Director of Elections and the office staff of the Board of Elections for the extremely long, difficult hours. They all worked. It was just truly amazing to watch these people come together and pull off an election like we did. Thirdly, I'd like to thank the democracy heroes, the citizens of Rowan County who showed up day in and day out to work at the polls and be there for the citizens who came to vote. They did so with much enthusiasm and as everyone is well aware, probably some considerable risk to their health. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank April Everett of the county office there. April stuck with us through every one of our public meetings and she just did an excellent job having our video set up so the citizens could see what was going on and everyone would know that we did have a fair, safe, and free election in Rowan County. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Benson, and we do owe a lot to Brenda out of Board of Elections and thank you for her leadership. She's new out there and so we appreciate what her team has done, so thank you. Anyone else, April? All right, then we'll move on to item number...
Three.
Item number three, and that is, let's see here. Mr. Shelton from the EDC. When you're here, that's a good thing. Right? So we'll put you on as item number three throughout 2021, if you don't mind.
I'll try my best. Yeah, none at all. I will thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you board members for hearing this request today for Project Hero. This is an existing employer in Rowan County. They've been around for a long time now, one of our more valued companies, most valued companies. This is a competitive project. We've got a site in Tennessee that the company is considering for this project. It's an expansion, obviously, but if Rowan were chosen, the company would create 30 new jobs over the next four years, also invest about one and a half million dollars in new construction and equipment. They would be expanding their existing building as part of this project. Again, one and a half million dollars, give or take, in new investment in Rowan County. The company is requesting a Level One grant, which of course is equivalent to 75% of the new tax revenue generated. And the assumptions that were in your packet were based on the current tax rate, of course, but also based on the project being done by the end of next year with that total one and a half million dollar investment. Those are the numbers and we're anticipating about, I guess, $102,000 in new tax revenue being generated for the community and for the county over the next 10 years as part of this project. We lost it there. With the Level One grant, if that was awarded to the company, that would be equivalent to about $38,000, $38,316 to be exact. And of course, over 10 years, the company, after the grant, the county would retain just under $64,000 as part of this project. So anyway, those are the basics and of course, as far as other assistance, this company is in within the city limits of Salisbury. And at their November 3rd meeting, City Council did approve a Level One grant of their own for the project, equivalent to just under $42,000. Also, the City Council agreed to apply for a rural building reuse grant and a 1-N-C grant on behalf of the company. Of course, those are programs that you have applied for in the past for other projects. So there is other support for Project Hero. But EDC is asking the commissioners approve a Level One grant for Project Hero, again, 75% over five years. And again, by the end of 2024, there'd be 30 new jobs in Rowan County as a result of this project and $63,860 of new revenue for the county over the 10-year lifespan of the project. And once again, an opportunity to support a valued existing employer.
Just for information purposes, would you explain why they qualify for this since the investment in dollars and cents in the building there is only, what, a million and a half dollars, I think?
Yeah, good question, Mr. Green. Traditionally, the county will have a threshold of $5 million for new investment, but in the past, commissioners have approved investments at lower levels for existing companies. This is a way to show support for existing industry.
And the increase in 30 jobs is why it is important for us to make this investment in this company, not just the million and a half dollars, but additional 30 jobs along with it.
Right, and using the metrics that, you know, a lot of times when you create a new job, there's spin-off effect to that. There's, you know, anything from a gas station, you know, selling more gas or contractors getting more work, but based on certain metrics, we estimate about 125 additional indirect and induced jobs would be created as a result of these 30 jobs by the company. So there is a spillover effect that's good for everyone involved.
You know what the salary range is for these jobs, Scott?
The average salary for these new jobs is over $61,000 a year. These are highly skilled professional jobs, so that's another reason why I think you'll see a bigger indirect and induced effect for this. And Mr. Dees, you're up a good point. The 75% is the new revenue created. It's not what they're already paying, it's the new tax revenue.
Scott, is this a, so are these going to be similar to the jobs that are here or is this some new endeavor they're trying to start here in the county?
It's really, I think, similar to what they're doing now and this business is going really well for them and just having a hard time keeping up with demand right now. But yeah, very similar, but again, highly skilled, highly trained jobs.
Well, that's good. Very, very well-paying jobs, that's a good thing. And certainly during this crazy 2020 that we have, when you consider kind of the beating we've taken locally, then, you know, Jim asked a good question. We've got a $5 million policy, why are we dipping down to a million and a half? Well, we're doing that because the time calls for it, but at the same time, we're also competing against Tennessee. This isn't a slam dunk. We're in a competition and Tennessee has a very, very favorable tax structure there. Now, they do have a corporate tax rate, they don't have a personal, they don't have personal income tax, but that certainly is still figured into their overall consideration when they're trying to decide between Tennessee and North Carolina. So anything we can do to make Rowan County more attractive, even though we're kind of behind the eight ball sometimes, I think we ought to do, especially for a business that's been paying taxes here a long time and been employing people, this is kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think it's important to note too, that the competition being Nashville in particular, that's a pretty hot area, a fast-growing area with a lot of professional jobs. So it is, you know, pretty stiff competition. And just so the board knows, we anticipate a decision probably by mid-December. This will be a relatively fast-moving project. And as far as the job creation, the bulk of the jobs, around 25 of these 30 jobs will be created by the end of 2022, so we're basically a two-year span.
All right, any other questions for Scott? All right, if not, thank you, Scott. Hang out in case we have some. So we'll open the floor now. We'll have, well, public hearings, part of the law and our policy. So if anyone would like to speak about this incentive package that we're going to offer, then please feel free to come forward and identify yourself and you've got three minutes. All right, seeing no one, close the floor. And commissioners, I need a motion to approve the incentive grant request by the EDC for Project Hero.
So move.
Thank you. All right, Judy, we have a second. Subject to 24-hour, kind of a delay that we'll have because of this Zoom meeting, but we'll come back and circle back around to that in 24 hours. All right, any other, any other comments? All right, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
We'll see you next month. All right. All right, item number four, public hearing for Z03-20. Aaron Poplin, Aaron, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a little bit since I've been here.
Have you been getting younger?
I do kind of age that way.
Okay, yeah.
I have the same problem here.
No, you don't.
But this is a public hearing for Z0320, a request from RR to CBI at the corner of Briggs Road and Mooresville Road. And this is five tax persons involved, 465A, 043, 044, 045, 046, and 047. So if we take a look here, it's a 5.28 acre tract right there at the northwest corner of Briggs and Mooresville Road and it's currently zoned rural residential. And as of now, it's just kind of a empty field with some crops on it. Now, this is in the, it's right on the border between Area 1 and Area 2 of the Western Area Land Use Plan and it is in one of the two recognized regional nodes. And the plan encourages commercial uses in these nodes that support existing and future populations and their needs for retail goods and services. The plan also suggests that the technical review committee play an increased role in review of commercial uses and their potential impacts on the surrounding area and that they should be considering things like building appearance, design elements, and landscaping for new businesses. Let's see. There we go. So the consistency of the requested zoning district, CBI is generally appropriate and it's identified by the adopted land use plan for highway businesses along NC and US highways, but it's also recognized as appropriate zoning for our community and regional nodes. The request also falls within a watershed, so it's in the Back Creek-Slambs Creek watershed too, so there's some additional intensity standards that apply. As of now, they do meet the requirements for residential developed lots, which is just at 40,000 square feet a lot. But if there was a commercial development to come by, then it would be a 12% built upon area maximum, which could be increased up to 70% if they got an SNIA permit from this board here. And then we do find this falls in a face-too store management area, but that's handled by the North Department, Department of Environmental Quality. So just taking a look at the compatibility of the uses, the current district, RR, most of those uses are either residential uses or they're permitted as rural home occupations. And with the text amendment last year, that limits the scope of any of those rural home occupations to 2,000 square feet. And then with the CBI district, it's a pretty wide open district. There's a lot that's allowed by right in that district. Taking a look at the current vicinity, looking west, you can see the lock fire department and there's another abandoned commercial building a little bit further down. Looking north, most of Briggs Road is pretty much an agricultural area. And then going back east, just south of Mooresville Road, we have a lot of older commercial buildings with a couple of commercial uses still activated. And we can kind of see that a little bit better from the aerial here. So if we look, pretty much most of that northern side is all agricultural fields. And then the southern side towards Mooresville Road are mostly older commercial buildings with all those buildings existing prior to zoning in 98. And there's about three active businesses out there now. There's a auto repair shop, there's a small engine repair, and then a general commercial store right there at the intersection of Mooresville and Meadow Road. And this is kind of appearing on the zoning map as well. So most of the zoning here is either RR or RA with the gray one being the RR district. And then we do have that southern part underneath Mooresville Road there as a 17-acre CBI district with most of those older commercial buildings in there. So taking a look at the potential impacts on facilities, Mooresville Road's got a design capacity of 13,600 vehicles a day and as of 2019, we're looking at about 7,200 vehicles. And then Briggs Road is about 12,500 vehicles a day with 4,200 vehicles in 2018. It should be noted that east of Briggs Road, Mooresville Road has a 100-foot observed right-of-way for a future expansion to a potential for lanes and that both Mooresville Road and Briggs Road are considered major thoroughfares. And then after talking with the NC DOT, they feel that a commercial use in this proposed district would most likely not be granted access off of Mooresville Road and that they're likely to come off of Briggs Road, but without a specific, tell me if they were going to have to put in some sort of improvement to get access. And then according to telecommunications, pulled up records for traffic incidences in that area and as of in the last five years, there's been about 32 automobile crashes. And then for other utilities, we have, they use boll septic out there and any impacts on school would be the same in CBI as it would be in RR. Back at the September Planning Board meeting, they approved the request and these were the two statements of resiliency and consistency. And then just some further comments, since this is a straight rezoning to CBI, we need to consider every use in the CBI district and we can't put any kind of conditions on there since this isn't a conditional district rezoning. If the board feels that they might want to encourage something more specific or they feel that certain uses in this district might not be appropriate for the site or that they might want some higher performance standards, it may be worth looking into having an applicant come back with a conditional district with something more specific in mind. Because as it stands now, if it is approved today, only the standards that are required for CBI currently are what we could apply to an applicant that came up. And then given this track's prominence in the Western Area Land Use Plan as a regional node, a detailed development presented as a conditional district may be warranted. And then with a little bit of history, the RR at this area is generally a holdover from the original zoning in 98 and it was kind of seen as more of a, like a holding district so that some more research could be due for what could be appropriate in the future for this area. And then as far as procedures, we have conduct a public hearing, adopt statements of resiliency and then approve to my table the request. And if you have any questions, I'm here and I'm not sure if the applicant, Daniel Amazon, is in on chat or not.
Go back two slides.
Yes.
All right, any questions for Aaron?
Yeah, Aaron, is there anything in, in the land use rules about pervious versus non-pervious materials for driveways and parking spots? I'm concerned about this being located in a watershed.
So we don't have anything specifically saying what, or if they can or can't have impervious or pervious surfaces? With the watershed rules, if they were to apply without a SNIA permit, they would be limited to 12% of the lot impervious or, sorry, impervious surfaces. And if they wanted to increase to more than 12%, they would have to come to the board to increase that allotment.
So with those percentages then, does that basically keep the water, runoff water on the property?
It wouldn't necessarily keep it on the property, but it's to keep the watershed from having too much impervious surface in general because we have a specific allotment at the county level that we can exempt from those rules.
So there's a, did you say it's the, oh yeah, impervious? Yeah, because my, you know, when we're planning, one of the things that seems to always get forgot, you know, forgotten in this whole process is where is the water going to go when you get all those roofs and all that concrete for driveways there and the roads? And then you start sending water downstream and then it starts flooding other areas. So it really, it's tricky, but I would hope that's something that, that the planning group would take a look at. And I'll tell you that half-inch gravel is a whole lot cheaper than concrete.
These five parcels that are here, are they, do they all have common ownership?
Yes, they're on the same ownership.
Okay. This is, this is another example. Last, last meeting we had, we did a proclamation honoring farmland and here's, this area is a natural, in my opinion, a natural progression to what we're doing here, but this is another, just another point of our farmland being taken up by commercial use. And it is, it would make common sense on this major fairway, I'm not saying that it's something that shouldn't be done, I'm just saying that little by little, as we see Rowan County progress, this is what's happened to our farmland.
So my question, help me understand this, Aaron. So this went through Planning Board and Planning Board approved CBI.
Right.
Some of the comments that you put up here would be that we may not want to do that, we may want to hold off and do conditional use. We may want to hold off and do conditional use so that we can have a little bit of say, is basically what you're saying.
Right.
Was that not part of your discussion with planning board? In other words, that's, that's what staff is saying, but planning, not to take that advice?
Pretty sure the report was about the same. And I don't recall the, there was some discussion about that, but I don't think they really did on it too much. And I think they looked across the road and saw the 17 acres there already and just said that straight CBI was sufficient. But there was some discussion and whether that was unanimous. But again, there was some talk about, should they do that? One thing that's important to note, directly, we can't require an applicant to submit a conditional district. But indirectly, we can by saying we have concerns of what is permitted by right. Is that, is that reasonable for this location to sort of take it all in? Or based on our land use plan, the fact that's two regional nodes, do we want more information before we make our decision? So at that point, it goes back to the applicant of, we have concerns with a straight rezoning. Would you like to consider a conditional district? And allow them to table it or tape, table a decision, allow them to bring it back. But I don't recall, again, that getting too much traction at the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, that, I think that's a very good question about conditional use. Especially as we are trying to make sure that the zoning in that direction, especially as you get out to the agricultural area, stays within the plan that is there. Maybe Jim can speak more to that.
Well, let's, let's move ahead and just kind of see how the night progresses, shall we?
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I call back to Aaron on the slide, he showed that the property immediately across from it's on CBI. So I think our opportunities to control what's gonna go there is gonna kind of be a moot point at this, at this point in time. The other thing I would say, my time I spent on the planning board, one of the big things we talked about in the eastern and the western land use plan was identifying these nodes. And this is definitely one, which means it's something we've identified that we saw potential commercial growth. And, you know, so if we've got it in our plan, it's across the street. I really don't see the, the need to fall back to a conditional, to a conditional district. I just, I just don't think it's warranted. That's just my opinion.
Good input. Thank you, Craig. All right, well, let's, so we got some work to do here, so let's move on. And you guys hang, hang out. So is the applicant, I see Daniels here, is the applicant here with you? No? Okay, anything you'd like to say, Daniel? Yeah, come on up.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Daniel Almazan. Oh, sorry. My name is Daniel Almazan with Allen Tate Realtors. I'm actually representing the owner, Greer N. Goodman, for this application. One of the things that I just wanted to acknowledge is, is that Greer Goodman is a decorated World War II Navy veteran. I appreciate his service. Whenever he and his son Neil Goodman, whenever they first looked at this property, this is back in 96, they bought, it was a little bit over 10 acres and they subdivided at that point to develop. Shortly after Neil unfortunately was diagnosed with cancer and passed away in 2000. And so since then, he's held the property, hasn't developed it. And, well, Mr. Goodman's 95 now, so he's feeling like it's probably time to, to do something with it. He would like to sell it. Whenever we talked about some, some uses for it, obviously, we were looking for highest and best. I referred to the Rowan County Long Term Use Plan and clearly it shows that it's a, it's a commercial node. We looked at some of the uses across the street. Obviously, it was consistent with CBI. And even for marketing purposes and for his marketability, it made more sense for us to look at something that had as many uses as possible. I know whenever we went to the planning board, you know, whenever Aaron was talking about some of the, the suggestions that staff is making, we, we didn't have that, that conversation or suggestion to change our application, maybe to change the zoning classification. And, and we didn't have any, any of that feedback from planning board. So, so I apologize. I'm, I didn't come prepared to, to discuss that just because I'm just finding out about that suggestion. But in terms of what we were doing is, is that we were just keeping this limited to the acreage that was fronting Moore'sville Road. We were leaving the five acres in the back as residential. And, and I mean, like it was an appropriate use based, based on what we were doing. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
That's good clarification for me, Mr. D, Mr. L.
Daniel's fine.
Sorry, sorry.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dan. Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Maybe you, somebody can explain the, what I've heard was that the state is requiring 100 feet at the Moore'sville intersection.
Correct.
Is that correct? So?
Yeah, so we're gonna have two limitations. Well, I guess actually three. You've got DOT will ultimately decide where that, that driveway permit will be located or can be located. They may prescribe additional, you know, roadwork, like a turn lane. And, well, we know that we don't have sewer out there, so again, that's gonna limit what, what can go out there. And then we have an impervious limitation. So, so within that, there's some built-in limitations. And I think that there's also creates an opportunity for someone who would come back and has a specific use that, that they want to use more than 12%, they're gonna have to be back in front of this board.
You've got about 700, 700 linear feet of, of space, so 100 feet at the intersection is not gonna affect you that much.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Daniel, are there plans? Do you know at all?
No, we haven't had any, any interest. It hasn't been marketed yet.
No, 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 no. My question, my question is, is, um, long range, does DOT have plans to turn Moore'sville Road into a four lane road?
Oh, I'm not aware that they have any, that they have any DOT projects there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an, that's an MPO project and it's, it's way out in the future, Judy.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else for Daniel? All right, thank, thank you. All right, so what we'll do is we're gonna have a public, a time for bub, public comments. So if you'd like to come forward and speak about this project, we'll have you one at a time and you'll have three minutes to talk. So does anyone wanna, wanna speak?
No. Just being safe.
Yeah, so come on up and state your name and address for the record and, and welcome. We're glad you're here.
Yes, my name is Larry Bell. I live at 970 Briggs Road, own property at 950 Briggs Road. And I just don't think we need to take our agricultural property away from us to build property down there. I mean, it's busy enough at that intersection how it is. You try to get out there in the morning, at 7:30, 8 o'clock is very busy intersection. At 5 o'clock in the evening, it's very busy. I just don't think we need to develop it. I think it needs to stay agriculture. I moved to the county 20 years ago to live in the county. I didn't move out there to live in the city. They want to develop something and build, uh, buildings, you know, for the industry, they need to build it in the city. Don't build it out there in the country where I live. They need to build it out in the city. We need to keep the country, country. There's too much going on out there now. That's all I want to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone remote that would like to speak.
Okay, can you hold on? All right, if you'd identify yourself, your name and your address.
Yes, this is Jay and Tiffany Wallace and we live at 5506 Moore'sville Road. And our property backs up to this. We feel the same way as the gentleman that spoke earlier. We have major concerns about this. We expressed our concerns to the planning board. One of our major concerns is the fact that this intersection is an extremely busy intersection. And the planning board, you know, one of the guys on the planning board had even said that, you know, his daughters travel up and down this road to go to school every day. And he didn't feel like it was a good, a good thing to take this land that is obviously farmland, agricultural land. We moved out here because we want to live in the country. And our biggest concern is that you also have a fire department that runs many calls a day directly across from this property. So not only are you gonna be fighting the traffic that comes through here every day at 8 o'clock in the morning, you can't even get out of your driveway. And at 5 o'clock in the evening, you can't get out of your driveway. And then we add the fire trucks and the emergency vehicles that are coming out of the, right across the street from this. Not to mention, there's been so many accidents right there at Briggs Road that, that's a, a big deal because we have, my husband even totaled his car there, you know, a few months ago. So we've got major concerns about that. Another issue is the fact that there is no sewer or water. So this limits what can go there. We have heard word that, you know, this could potentially be a Dollar General. That's not something that we want. There is a Dollar General, there's 10 of them within a 10 mile radius of this exact spot. We do not want a business such as that coming out here and being completely out of place. Not to mention, the watershed is another issue for us as well. This is a flatland area where we already have flooding. So if you take all that watershed, it's gonna run over to our property. And there's another property that sits right beside of us that it would affect as well. So, you know, one of the things the planning board has suggested was to have them submit a set of plans. We would like, you know, for that to be taken in consideration before, you know, this land, just they give them a blank check to basically put whatever on that land. And then at that point, we have no say so at all. So like I said, we have major concerns about this, you know, our neighbors around this area, nobody is happy about this. We just, we don't want something going there that is completely out of place. And I do understand that across the street that is zoned commercial, those businesses, if you look over there, most of them are dead or dying. They are not, most of those are not active businesses. So that is something to take in consideration as well. But the one thing that I really want you to take away from this is the traffic concern. Because anybody coming down 150 and you've already got distractions on both sides of the road and that intersection is extremely dangerous, it will become an even deadlier intersection at that point if another business goes there, especially something that would be a high traffic flow if it was gonna be, you know, a gas station or Dollar General or whatever. So we just wanted to express our concerns and, and let you know that we are, we do have major concerns about this and we would like this to be looked at closer.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. We appreciate your time and thank you for calling in.
Good evening. Thank you, gentlemen, for letting us, and letting us speak. I live at, my name is Bridgette Bell. I live at 970 Briggs Road. My husband and I have five acres on Briggs Road and we enjoy the privacy and the tranquility of a lifestyle, a country lifestyle. We move to country to have, to have our country, to love a country lifestyle. We sit on front porch at night, listen to the birds and we like to listen to, feel the cool breeze at night. Moore's, Briggs Road is already a cut through to Moore'sville Road. This area is now on agriculture and is on commercial and residential, industrial. We will no longer have any peace and quiet, the country lifestyle that we enjoy. We echo the same concerns that Mrs. Wallace, I'm sorry, Tiffany, sorry, had just, all those concerns, we have, we have those same concerns that she has. There is no carbon gathering on Moore'sville Road. It's already flooding now. There is, it creates a lot of flooding on Moore'sville Road because there is no carbon gathering. And we also agree with Commissioner Green's comments on agriculture and if we preserve, on preserving farmland. So once it's gone, it's gone. We don't get the farmland back. So we encourage that the board commissioner is to not request rezon. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? April, anyone else? All right, then we'll close, the time for a public hearing, public comments. And, hey, Aaron, can I get you back up here? As we do these rezonings, at times, we, we, we hear one thing come up. It's, it's quite, quite often, which is the issue of traffic. We, can you go back to your traffic?
See.
So the DOT, based on?
I think April needs to pull that back up.
But I don't know how DOT sets traffic standards, but I just want you to review those again for us.
So you have the, the design capacity up top there?
Yeah. But it has a capacity of 13,600 and current is 7,200, so a little less than, it's got a little more than 50% current capacity, Briggs Road.
That was in, it's, uh, 2019.
19, right. Briggs Road, about, about a third of the capacity. So I just, I wanted to take a look at that. I didn't remember what it was. But as we do these zoning issues, I think we hear that a lot. And so I just wanted to see what capacity was on that.
Do you have one of those matrix?
Go ahead, Mike.
Do you have one of those CBI matrix available? Yeah, the, uh, it's right here. Okay.
The residential means individual family and multifamily?
Right, they could do either a single family, a duplex, or a, or some type of mobile or modular home.
Okay, what about apartment complex?
No, that would need to be multifamily residential.
And where it says permitted with SR, I'm drawing a blank on SR.
Yep, so that's our rural home occupation. And specifically in the RR district, that's now been limited to a 2,000 square foot in total for the use. So that requires a, you have to live on the property or adjacent to the property. And then your use, you can have a specific commercial use as long as you live there and meet those other requirements.
So these are five, I think it was five lots? So these are five, I think it was five lots that you're doing?
Yeah, there's five lots involved.
You could have five residences with five different businesses.
Yeah, they would still be, they still have to meet watershed standards once they went to, if they tried to do any kind of commercial activity, even in a...
Would or would not?
They would. But potentially, you could have five home occupations on those lots.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Commissioners, comments?
We don't control any entrance or exits into major highways, so even if we wanted to limit this to entrance into Briggs Road, we couldn't do it, could we?
Well, I'll make some comments. Now, I, I, I would have liked to see us maybe do a conditional use, but I understand Commissioner Pierce's point, and I take that point. We do have, one thing that's kind of protecting us here is that watershed issue. They would have to come back to us for the watershed issue, so that's certainly something that would give us ability to give some input there. This is a commercial node. This is not a surprise. This isn't new. This has been out there. Erin, when we, Shane, when, when did we do a land use plan?
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine? So this is, we've known that this day is coming, and I think I said last time, we had one of these that, get ready, because Rowan County is going to see more and more of this as, as things continue to happen. We're getting pressure on us now, folks wanting to leave Greens, Greensboro, folks wanting to leave Winston, folks wanting to leave Charlotte. We're going to have this pressure put on us, and so we'll have to make, make these decisions more and more. I'm not, I'm not so much worried about the traffic. I, I am sorry for Ms. Wallace that called, and her husband had an accident. That's obviously a horrible thing, and I hope he's okay. But the, the traffic information that we have says there's plenty of capacity out there. Then probably the biggest thing is, to me, is we get back to this issue of farmland, and there's a gentleman and his family that own that land, and they are the ones that control it, and they're the ones that determine what they're, what they're going to do with it. And if, if they want to keep it as farmland, then they have that ability to do. If neighbors want to make him an offer, buy his farmland from him and keep it that way, there's always that possibility, but we, we can't help that guy that he has to keep it in farmland. And that's, that's, again, another issue that we're certainly going to be faced with as we move on from all of us being commissioners. Mike and Craig just re-upped for another four years, but certainly an issue that the pressure of growth in Rowan County is going to continue to bring to us. So I, I did send a message to Daniel Amazon, and that was the first thing that popped into my head, is this going to be a Dollar General? He told me no, that this is not what they're planning for, so. I have a second question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I have two concerns. Number one is the watershed. And we really need to start planning ways to slow the water down when we have very hard rains into the creek so it floods, like I said, below. So I would really like to see us to direct our planning department to start working on that. Like I said, you know, I believe people need to start looking at pervious surfaces rather than concrete. And I've got fast-moving water off of my house, and it lands on my half-inch stone and just goes right down into the, right down into the soil. So there's no runoff whatsoever. And my lot is, my lot is sloping back down to what used to be a creek. And then the other thing is, is the traffic. I know we're not at capacity, but as we continue to build along these major thoroughfares, one of my biggest concerns is that we have more and more driveways. And as you continue to work with the Charlotte area planning board, regional planning board, I hope that that is also a discussion, especially as you work on Mooresville Road for the future. Because I think we saw how difficult that was for people when we went up Highway 70. So if we can start planning now and limit the number of driveways along Mooresville Road, we can keep it safe for a while and not have to rush into doing a front-edge road or whatever is going to keep people safe. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Clusman. From the MPO standpoint, this is a project that is out there. I'm not sure that the MP, well, the MPO is supposed to plan and build for the future. They're in a financial crisis right now. They rifled through about $2 billion in just a couple of years. So the Department of Transportation is, is kind of broke right now. They're working on how to, how to fund that again. But, I mean, not to go into a whole lot about the MPO, but each of these projects is scored and studied, and then they determine based on need which projects need to be built first and which ones can be done in the future. And so this is one that they just don't see the demand for yet because they don't see the traffic along that, along that areas demanding such a big expenditures. But, but that's going to, that's certainly going to become. We, the county doesn't determine the road cuts. We don't determine driveway cuts on Mooresville Road or Briggs Road. That's a DOT issue, and certainly we trust them to, to use best judgment in, in where those cuts are made. So some good points. Judy, thanks for bringing those up. Any, any other comments?
Another question.
For Erin?
Is the area of zone CBI across the road?
Yes.
So I assume that's also in the watershed over there?
Actually, the watershed line is Briggs Road.
Okay.
But most, since all of those structures below Mooresville Road existed prior to zoning anyways, they were also built before a watershed ordinance came into effect, so they'd have been, new development down there, if they were in the watershed, would be subject to it, but the existing structures themselves wouldn't be.
You talking on the south side?
Right.
Of Mooresville Road? You're not talking about on the north side that we're talking?
No, the part we're talking about is in the watershed, and any new development would need to meet watershed requirements.
So I guess my question is, the CBI that's already there across the road? Because I know that someone had mentioned out, was on the phone or up here, that, you know, it's for those businesses, our older businesses. If they were to sell, say, to Dollar General, would they have to come here, go through the watershed issue with us? Or since they're pre-existing before zoning, whatever, they can do what they want to over there?
I'm fairly certain that the watershed in, or starts at Briggs Road. I'd have to go double-check a map to see, but in the event that they were in the watershed, the impervious surface covers they have now would be grandfathered in, so I'm not sure if they would have enough of a footprint to require coming here or not.
Okay. Thank you. And that watershed is 10%. So I, I mean, I think what we've heard is, if we approve this, it's got to be a, they're really limited in what they can do.
Right. Maybe not, 12% is not a whole lot to put on a lot. Most commercial uses in a watershed, too, winds up coming up and getting an SNI permit.
Erin, what is an, what is an SNI permit?
It's a special non-residential intensity allocation.
Commissioner Clusman, that's what we did a couple of meetings back. Remember that applicant came to us, and the only reason they had to come to us, I believe it was the event, the event center that they were trying to do?
Oh, yes.
Remember? So we had to approve going over the 10%, and so that's, that's what that was. All right, any other questions for Erin or Shane? All right. Anyone want to jump out there and make a motion?
Don't you have to read the statements first?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So on page four, we have statement of reasonableness. I'll read that and make this in the form of a motion. The request is in line with Areas 1 and 2 of the Western Land Use Plan. It is located within a community node. The property is adjacent to other CBI zoned properties and is along major thoroughfare. So I'll need a second.
Second.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then statement of consistency in the form of a motion. The request is consistent with Western Land Use Plan, Area 1 and 2. Property is located in a community node with, which promotes and encourages business growth. It is located along a major thoroughfare and in the community's best interest.
Second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 No.
No? No? Then do we have a motion to approve ZO3-20? All right, Craig, motion, second?
Second.
All right, Mike, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any knows?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, and that's it. All right, we'll move on to the next. All right, item number five.
Yep.
Item number five. Public hearing for a transportation grant application. Is Valerie here or on the call, or Erin, are you handling this?
You hear me?
Oh, hey, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. It's currently grant season for fiscal year 2022. Rowan County Transit relies heavily on our grant funding, and this is just the first step in a long process. The request tonight is to be allowed to apply for the grants we traditionally qualify for and have over the past few years. Once we were to receive an actual award letter, it would be brought again to the board for approval, so tonight's request is simply to be able to apply for the amounts indicated. There is one update, and that is for 5311 admin. Originally, the 20% county match included around $12,000 provided from by the state. The state currently will not guarantee that they will be able to give us any funding, so we had to take that out, changing the local match to 49,428. That would affect the total county match should we receive approval for all of our grants we apply for, making that around $181,028. The total of the NC DOT grants being requested is $1,194,936. And like I said earlier, the RTS, Rowan Transit System relies heavily on the grant funding to operate.
Will we need to approve the grant and separately adopt the resolution, Jay? Will we need to approve the grant applications and then separately adopt the resolution? All right, any questions for Valerie? All right, then we'll open the, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. How much matching money are we talking about here? As far as our part, the county's part?
So each one was broken down. The only change where the total county match is, I did not change that in red, it would end up being $181,028. That's taking the $12,357 that the state will not provide us or guaranteed to provide us at this time in 5311. Normally, the state does chip in some, but at this point in time, with so many funding sources unknown, we're just requesting to be able to apply for what we think we may need in the worst-case scenario.
Erin, how much we, did we allocate money in the budget for this?
Nothing would be budgeted for this yet.
Next year's budget.
This is fiscal year 2022.
I mean, 2022.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not in this year's.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
All right, any other questions for Valerie? All right, if not, then we'll open the floor for a public hearing. If anyone would like to come speak regarding the transportation grant application, please come forward. Do we have anyone, April, who would like to speak?
We'll extend the same invitation to our remote participants. If you'd like to use the raise-your-hand feature within the Zoom app, we'll get you put on the list to speak.
All right, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners will need a, a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 transportation grant application.
So moved.
All right, so Craig, motion, Jim, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And motion to adopt the CTP resolution. We have a motion.
So moved.
Craig and Jim, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you, Valerie. Appreciate you being with us. Is, where's Jonathan? Hey, Jon. Judy, would you like to introduce your guest?
Yes, I'm very thrilled to introduce the new mayor of Spencer, Mayor Jonathan Williams, and he is bringing us some exciting updates as to what's been going on in the town of Spencer.
Anything over six months isn't new, so.
This is true, all right.
Welcome.
Very good.
Yeah, we glad, we're glad you're here.
Great. Commissioner Eds, commissioners, thank you very much. Commissioner Clusman, thank you very much for inviting us here today. Again, I'm Jonathan Williams, the mayor of Spencer. I was elected last November, so I have one year under my belt, and within that year, we have accomplished a lot, but I think I'm more excited with the things that we have on the horizon over the next, over the next year or so. What I want to do is share a little bit of what we've done over the course of the last year and things we're looking forward to in the coming months. First, I do want to introduce, I have with me tonight Peter Franzese. Peter is our new assistant town manager. It is our intent that at the beginning of 2021, he will be taking over for interim town manager David Trine. David's been with us for about a year and a half and has led us very well in the transition, and David is prepping, I think, for a true retirement, maybe. And so we're excited to have Peter on board. He's learning from Mr. Trine right now on all the things that we have going on, and I'm going to invite him. He has come to us from the city of Concord. He served in a project administration and communications role there as a special projects coordinator, so he is just the man for, for all the many projects that we have on the horizon. So Peter, I'm going to invite him to come forward, tell you a little bit about some of the things that he... So Peter, I'm going to invite him to come forward, tell you a little bit about some of the things that he is leading right now. And then I'll close this out with an update on some of our larger capital projects that we're planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Williams, and thank you to the Board of Commissioners and the county staff. My name is Peter Franzese, and it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. And so as the mayor said, I'm, I'm the new guy. I started with the town of Spencer October 5th and got right to work. And in fact, within the first few days, one of the things I was tasked with by our accounting clerk was to go to the bank. And I deposited a check from Rowan County in the order of about $92,000 of COVID funds. And we thanked the county for passing those funds along to the town of Spencer. Helped provide some reimbursement for some public safety salaries that we had expended, and we appreciate that. And so it's been a very busy time. Another thing that I got right down to business with was working on our website update project and our branding project. We're working with Miller Davis on both of those to join the countywide brand. And we're excited about the potential ideas we've seen for that so far, and that's moving along. We're also working on a personnel policy update in the town of Spencer to bring our policies and procedures for town staff up to date and, and give us a good structure moving forward. And we've also been very busy in filling some vacancies. And we will soon have some new staff members coming on board, including a code enforcement officer and a finance officer. And, and soon after that, a new town clerk. So it's been a pleasure to join the team there and to be working here in Rowan County. And I want to turn it back over to Mayor Williams. Thank you very much.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Peter. And so I get to share some of the exciting stuff going on. And Peter mentioned some of the things going on, and those are exciting as well. But we've got some really, really big plans on the horizon. Many of you have probably already heard about our new town hall and police department. We have purchased half of the old Park Plaza building. And we will be renovating that, hoping to start construction at the end of December, beginning of January. It's about an eight to 10 month construction project, so we should be in it by next fall. And that will serve not only our town offices and police department, it will have future potential lease space for nonprofits in the community. And then we have community partners in Rob and Beth Nance, who have purchased the other half of Park Plaza. And they are looking to move the North Carolina Doll and Toy Museum into larger space in that building, as well as lease out some of the other space as well. So we are hoping within the next year to have that facility completely occupied. And I don't believe that it has been completely occupied in many, many years. So we're excited about that. The other thing that we have going on right now is we are in the process of extending the Adken River Trailhead across into the town of Spencer, onto the Rowan County side of the Adken River. We've gotten about $120,000 in grant funding right now to begin initial phases of that. It's about a half million dollar project overall that's planned. And the neat thing about that, that we intend to, to work on that over the next several years. But eventually, that's going to tie into a bicycle lane greenway system that will extend all the way from the river into the town of Spencer, out Third Street to Grants Creek. We have a three and a half million dollar NC DOT grant, requires a $900,000 community match to fund that. And we are in the planning phases of that and hoping to start that process later next year. DOT has agreed, the funds are committed to us, but right now they don't have the funds to actually move the project forward. But we're excited about that as well. We, one of the other things that we have applied for is a CBDG or CBPG grant of $750,000. We are intending to use that for rehabilitation of probably 10 to 20 homes for low and moderate income families within town, with a focus on the northern end of town, but really those can be used throughout town. So we have the largest contiguous historic district in the state of North Carolina, which is a wonderful thing. But we also recognize we need to be making investments into those historic properties to save them and, and upgrade them to, to prevent them from falling into disrepair. So really what we are focused on doing is moving Spencer forward. And that is the goal of our strategic plan that we adopted earlier this year. Our motto in Spencer has been that we're on the right track. But like, what I like to tell folks is we can be on the right track, but if our engine is not moving and we're not getting anywhere, we're not making progress. And so our progress is to take that engine and move it forward in Spencer. And so we appreciate your partnership, Chairman Eds, Commissioner Green. We appreciate you coming and visiting us at our meeting several months back and for taking the time to meet with myself and Mayor Protem, Protem Seacrest. We look forward to many more years of partnership and working with you. And again, thank you for your commitment with the COVID funds. They've been put to good use and were much needed in this unique time that we're all experiencing. So thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight, and again, we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. Glad you're here with us tonight. We've enjoyed getting to know you. Best of luck to you. Best of luck to you. You evidently have a youth program going on now and Spencer, don't tell David Trine we said that or I said that. But I know it's been a huge help to you guys. So right place at the right time. So welcome and best of luck to you. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Klusman.
All right, Environmental Health Data, Nina Oliver. Nina, welcome. And thank you for being with us.
Thank you, commissioners. So I'm going to have Adrian Pruitt, our environmental health manager, go over. I believe each of you have the stats. I don't know if we can pull them up on the board. We've made a few modifications to them, nothing major. But as we go through, you'll see, you'll see a couple of changes. But these are the data sets or data points that our county manager provided us over the phone. We have had a chance to go over Board of Health with them. So we did that last week, and we'll be happy to go over them now and review them and answer any questions that our leadership has.
Good evening, commissioners.
Hey, welcome, Adrian.
Hey, how are you guys doing? Thank you so much. I'm Adrian Pruitt, Environmental Health Manager. Thank you guys for having me here. Let me go over some of this data set here. Nina had mentioned, we have a few changes to that. And mainly, this data that you're seeing was reported prior to end of day, Friday. So within the day to include November the 6th full day, it modified the amount of site evaluations and, and some of the, mainly site evaluations were additionally performed in that afternoon. But you can see we have a set of data there. You guys may be curious. So the, the acronyms or the codes beneath well inspections completed, soil site evaluations. So to explain that a little bit, our reporting process to, for daily time kept is actually reported in a state, a state requirement. Set of acronyms and codes that is part of their monthly tallying reports per every county. So to take those questions and put them into data that is easy for me to be able to determine, I more or less broke it down for the codes that the state requires and what, how I get the data. But you can see our total number of well inspections. That includes W1, W3s, which are site visits, new and repeated site visits, 34. Well permits requested, which are new applications in that timeframe of October the 26th and November the 6th of 13. Permits were waiting as of November the 6th, five. Soil site evaluations completed. That number's actually 99 as of end of day Friday. So it modified a little bit. That includes initial site visits and repeat site visits. We had a run of sites that were not ready, that we end up having to go back to. The S1E classification is a, for an initial site visit, state says we can only use that classification one time. So if we go out, the site's not ready, site's not been surveyed, it's thick underbrush, we can't do. We coded as an S1E, even though we did not actually evaluate the soils, could not do septic system layout. Every site visit after that would be an S1, however many that may be to complete the permitting process. We had 22 new soil site.
Hey, can I ask you right there? Because I know in the future, we're going to be talking about fees. And I think that's an important thing that you just brought up for us to understand, maybe a little deeper. That soil site evaluation completed, S1 and S1E. What do you, what, what do you think the percentage, that's 90, is that 95?
It's 95. There was actually 99.
Yeah, so 99. What, what do you think your percentage of completed versus kind of delayed is out of that 99?
It's about 50%, I'd say. Yeah, that we go to the site. Now, again, the delay doesn't mean that site's just not ready. It could be that we get to the site, we have marginal soils, issues where we need backhoe pits, but it delays the process that much longer. You may, we may return visit four times, needing to get, you know, initial evaluation, say the site's not ready. We've turned back when the site is ready, then we determine we have soil evaluation issues. A lot of times, we still try to look at soil, even though the property isn't surveyed properly, because we know that we may end up two, three, four times visiting the same site. We're trying to at least move forward with every site we go to.
Do you have a sense of what other communities, how that breakdown is? I mean, are we, is that outside the norm? Is there something, is that pretty normal?
It is normal. It's fairly normal. I'm dealing with other counties in my past as a soil consultant. It is, it's fairly normal. Getting the proper requirements that the state wants us to have is the most difficult part of the surveying. Because it puts the buyers in a, a position of, well, I don't want to survey a property I don't own. Because what if I don't buy it? I've just essentially given a free survey away. So a lot of, a lot of the issues we run into is, is that, is, you know, spending money on property that they have the, you know, potential of buying or that the soil is not suitable. So they end up surveying property, investing money in a property that they can't recoup ultimately in the long run. So it's, we end up spinning our wheels on a lot of these with, with return visits due to, to improper marking and surveying of that. So we, you see, we had soil site evaluations requested 22. And within that range, we still have 45 that are waiting, have an asterisk on that, noting that there were three that had planned on hiring a soil scientist to do session law 114, 2008 session law, or 2018 dash 114. On those, I didn't include those, which you can, you know, take it to 48 if you want to know the total applications of data reporting. Improvement permits completed. Those are the codes for improvement permits. That includes everything from improvement permits issuing to denials. And denial of an improvement permit does include completion. And if we deny the permits, 29 of those completed, that didn't change. An IP's requested 22, which are the same as a soil site evaluation. When they apply, they apply for soil site evaluation and an improvement permit at the same time. Without one, you can't get a permit if you don't apply. If you, we don't just do soil site evaluations without improvement permits being issued on them. That's our agreement saying that the property is suitable for a septic system. Total waiting is 45. Existing system inspections completed. So an existing system inspection is the reuse of an existing septic system on a property. A lot of times they're in mobile home parks or a home, a lot that may have had a existing house that may have burned down. To reuse, use that septic system, we have to inspect it to build a new home or bring another mobile home in. You see, we have none of those waiting. Nitrite, nitrite samples, none of those have been asked, have been applied for. The nitrite, nitrates waiting are actually part of the well kit, which is part of a new well application. So if you pay that fee for a new well application, you get a well kit, which includes a bacteriological analysis, nitrite, nitrite, and an inorganic test for lead, arsenic, heavy metals, pH, calcium, a whole gamut of those. No pesticide samples waiting or applied for.
Who does that testing for you?
State lab.
How long does it take them?
It depends. Back to you, we give within three to five days. Inorganic, it takes about 10 days to two weeks.
Adrian. Oh, go ahead, Jim.
No, I'm, that's all I.
Okay. Adrian, could you go back to the issue of sites not being ready? Maybe, I don't know if you can go back to the soil evaluations and those numbers there. My question is, is how many of the sites are simply not ready due to delays or not paying attention by the installer or the owner? I'm trying to get at, at our discussion on the health board as to why we were looking at adding an additional cost for each time you went out.
Yes, ma'am. So ultimately, the state gives us requirements that we have to have each one of our clients adhere to. Mainly due to rules and the, and the rule process we have, we have setbacks off of things like property lines, houses, basements, foundations, drainage features, things like this. Well, to maintain and ensure that we meet proper setbacks, properties have to be surveyed. Or, and the houses must be marked to identify where, where the home is going to go. Because we need to know that, you know, how far to be away from that, evaluate the proper area. So the issue that we're dealing with and Commissioner Klusman is referring to is, is these sites that we get to, our applications, they, they come in, they make an application to us, they, we have a packet that describes, it's about seven or eight pages long, that describes fully the requirements that we need to be able to properly do a soil site evaluation and to be able to issue a permit. We end up getting to these sites, and I, I don't have an exact quantitative number to put on that to say, you know, it's, it's 10 out of the last, you know, 35 applications. But to put, to say we get to these sites and property lines aren't marked or the homes aren't staked. And we're not looking for survey grade homes to be staked. As long as you, you have to, you have to turn in a site plan at the time of application. As long as your site plan matches what's in the field. And again, we're not looking for every, every client to be a surveyor, but we do have to have something marked. And we're showing up to a significant amount that's delaying us significantly, and there's nothing done. Or the light, or the lots aren't prepared properly, meaning they're just undergrowth, briar thickets, small, small trees, former, you know, cutovers. We can't see what we're doing if we can't see where we were in the process of, of, of evaluating the lot. So, you know, it is causing us some delays. Accuracy is one of those as well. It's not knowing where we're at on the property and be able to set lasers up and, and be able to shoot the septic systems in. But I don't have a quantitative number of that, but it, it does cause us significant delays and causes us to revisit sites at later dates. They ultimately go back in the queue. So if, if I was to pull application, an application today and it wasn't ready, I would contact the client and then let them know that it's not ready. And then it would go on my desk and, and wait till they got it prepared for me.
Adrian, I have a question for you. In just a, an educated guess, how many inspections are done with people other than contractors?
What do you mean?
Like private?
Yeah, there are five that don't have a contract. My point is, it would seem to me that 100% of the contractors in this county would know this, this requirement as well as you did. And yet we're being delayed and doing second calls on this type of stuff. Is this from lack of education on the contractor's part? Or just individuals that are trying to get lots approved for a septic tank without the idea that they're going to build within the next year or so?
I, I would actually say that most of our applications come from individuals that use our service. Yes, sir. Use our service one to two times in their life. So they are not aware that our rules and laws have changed and they're getting ready to change again in 2021. The proposal, new 18E rules are coming out for environmental health on site. They just don't know. So it has to do with this, they just don't know. Our contractors, I'd say are probably less than 30, 40%. The rest of it would be the.
Do we hand out any instructions to them when they get a permit?
Yes, we actually hand out to them, when they come in to make an application for a permit, we hand them about a seven, eight page requirements that explains the process of this is why we have to have this and, and requirements. Yes, sir.
And do you tell them that they have to have a backhoe come in to?
No, 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 we don't have to have a backhoe unless we run into soil issues. No, 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 we don't have to have a backhoe unless we run into soil issues. There are certain types of soils that are required to be evaluated in backhoe pits.
So, that's a possibility of having a delay also, if they have soils that they're not aware of.
Yeah, that no one could know this, honestly. Rowan County's got such variable soils, and it, there's no one that can know.
Adrian, I think I remember that, that when they come in and make application, that, that they are signing that they understand all these things and will do them appropriately. Does my memory, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we do have a form that they sign. That, that, it spells it out, they actually initial each box, and they do sign a date.
And that's, that's why, that's why when, when the fees do come back to us as commissioners, I really hope that we will do the additional fees from second time, 25 more, third time, $50 more, and then, if you got to go out there a fourth time, that it's going to be 100 bucks more.
Well, I, I'd like us to, to move on. We've got a lot of stuff, but, you know, we don't run your department. We're, you're thankful for that, and we're thankful as well. So, we appreciate the work that's being done. My last comment on this would be along the lines of what Commissioner Kalusman just said. Over this two-week period, which we'll assume that's 10 days, there's, there's 22 soil site evaluation permits requested, right? So, that's about two a day. So, Jim asked a great question. What's the breakdown between professionals who should know this as well as you do? And you said it's maybe 30%. And so, they're, they should probably be pretty prepared for you when they come out. It's the, the regular Joes and James, the taxpayers that, like me, you know, that now when I look back on this, probably wasn't prepared when you guys came out to see, right? So, maybe this could be a function of, we say, well, we're going to be a citizen-friendly department, and whoever is responsible for, there's someone there that's taking that application. When I did one, maybe it was last year, it was Tad that did it. And so, maybe that person, maybe we just adopt a philosophy that, hey, we understand these folks aren't builders, and we're going to give them all these sheets of paper that they're probably, if they read them, they're not going to understand it. So, if it's only two a day, could we potentially have whoever is, is filling out those forms to say, hey, listen, now, let me tell you, here's what you got to do. If you don't do this, we can't complete this task for you, and we're going to charge you extra to come out again. When you start talking dollars to me, I tend to perk up. So, maybe that's a potential, that's a possibility that we could look at.
And if, if I may real quick, and, and this will definitely have to be a, a longer conversation, but for me, customer service is very, very big, Commissioner, and so, we've had conversations about the importance of our secretary going over the sheets, because it's a lot of information. I mean, it can be overwhelming. But, I ask them to go over the sheet, tell them exactly what they need to get done, and then they sign off on it. It is the individuals that typically, they have to go back three, four, sometimes five times, which is time-consuming. We have had a conversation in the past, this is maybe going on nine, 10 months ago, maybe, where we had looked at, potentially looking at getting a position, it's called an environmental technician, where their only job is to go out to those lots to make sure that the lots are, are done. So, it's not our environmental health specialist going out wasting their time. Iredell has one, I think a couple of other counties have one. But, that, that is definitely something that we could, if the leadership is interested in, look at and getting pricing for. But, that would save our environmental health specialists a whole lot of time if all this person does, this technician, is go out there and make sure it's done. Lastly, I, I think environmental health is definitely going through some growing pains. Adrian is, is very by the book. He is policy-driven and rule-driven, which is what we want. Unfortunately, it's been a, a learning lesson for me and, and Adrian that our previous environmental health manager was not. So, there was a lot of things that were kind of waived or was not adhered to. Adrian is doing an excellent job with adhering to those rules. So, for individuals and contractors that come in, there is a little bit of a growing pain there, Commissioner. And so, what we, what we talk about is just continue to adhere to those, those policies and those rules. And by adhering to them, we will not get into too many tort claims or, or legal trouble. So, I, I just wanted to share that information regarding the, the folks that have to come back over and over again and, and why that could be a possible issue still.
And Chairman, I know you, you're ready to move on, but one quick note. We've been out in the field a couple of times recently, and some of these are processes that we're going to have to look at as staff for how we do our sampling. We talked about it on-site the other day, that we're still out there digging auger samples and trying to find locations of good dirt. But you go to Iredell County, they have to dig a walk-in pit. You know, so we're out there taking core samples, trying to find areas where we can do. And you go one county over, and they're digging walk-in pits where you can actually walk in and examine the soil, you know, right there. And, you know, that, that's, those are the things that we've, you know, that we just identified out in the field that just, just looking at those processes could, could certainly help. You know, from a standpoint of having it ready to walk in and inspect and not spend half a day out there with an auger digging down, trying to find good dirt. But.
Yeah, that is true. Thank you.
It's a long conversation.
It, it could be, this could be quite lengthy. In lieu of time, you know, if you guys want me to run through the rest of it. So, in addition to those requirements at the top, we also have, every day, we get things called in, like final inspections, well grouse, those are when septic are installed or wells are drilled, and we get complaints. So, if, if a neighboring septic system's failing on your neighbor's property. So, those we, we don't know when we're going to get them or how many we may get per day. Obviously, if it rains four inches, we don't get well grouse or final inspections. You can see the next, we have the number of site visits made per inspector. Broke the inspectors down, one through five, myself included. Number of permits issued each day per inspectors through that, that two-week period. Then there's a few more on a neighboring slide there that actually has it broken down into the number of soil site evaluations each day, and number of hours worked each day per inspector. And then we have food inspector report that covers the total number of food inspections, percent completed within that date range, quarterly inspections completed, inspections starting, inspections from dates starting July 1st till then, till November 6th, and total number of required inspections. And then a brief summary of what the, the food and lodging program actually inspected from categories one through four, because each category has different requirements.
Adrian, when it says total inspections, is that just for this timeframe? Or is that the total we have to do each year?
Each year.
Okay.
You keep a good account of the site visits, whether it's well, whether it's soil evaluation that, that your inspectors do per day? And are they on here? Am I missing it?
Yeah, the number of site visits made each day is on there, which includes septic and wells. And then, the number of site, soil site evaluations, which are just septics. I didn't break the wells down to their individual charts. But, we could, we, I could back the numbers out.
So, on some of these days, people are making one inspection a day?
Yes, yes. Well, I can't tell you, inspector one is only authorized in, in wells at the moment. So, he's not quite finished his authorization with the.
Every, every one of them have days that they only have one inspection a day.
It may be a day it rained. It could be days that it, it rained, or individual things could have came. They may have issued permits that day that they didn't get to go out and actually make site visits. They may have done complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian, I have one more question. Is the, are all the hires for food and lodging inspection done? Do we have any vacancies?
We have one vacancy. We have not, we've interviewed, haven't found a candidate that, that fits what we're looking for at the moment.
Okay.
I know we've talked about overtime and also hiring some contractors to get us caught up in that area. Where are we on that?
So, we are actually working five hours of required overtime per week minimum. Right now, if you want to work more, you can. Several inspectors have been working more, about half of them have been working in addition to five. And I've reached out to several contractors, licensed soil scientists, four to be exact. Two of the four, sorry, five, two of the four responded back that they are not interested. Two of them have not responded at all. We have not gotten the quotes back for that, and one of them actually gave us quotes. So, I have one quote, and it was ironically the ones we used in the past.
Yeah. Well, that's actually a good thing.
It is, actually, and they came in much lower and more economical than I anticipated on that. I was really wanting some other numbers to compare them to, but they, I don't have them. I've gotten no's and no responses.
So, there's light at the end of the tunnel. Have you measured how far down the tunnel you think the light is? When do, we're not asking to try to nail you on this. Where, when, when do you think we'll be caught up? Do you, do you have any personal gut feeling?
I would, I would really like to see January 1, in January, and into the month of January at latest.
So, even, maybe even a little sooner, Commissioner, and I, and I just wanted to share this. So, we are at four weeks and four days. That's over 50% cut from where, where we were, what, five weeks ago? Just of interest, and I'm just sharing this with leadership, we contacted some surrounding counties about their wait time. And I wanted to share, Iredell's at four weeks, Davie's at four to six weeks, Davidson's at two to three weeks, Cabares is at four weeks, Catawba's at three to five weeks, Randolph is at two weeks, Lincoln is at three to six weeks. So, and we, we are, we are, we understand that the commission is looking for a seven-day. We are working very hard to get to two weeks. And then, once we get to two weeks, we may or may not have to make some adjustments, meaning possible additional staffing to get to that. But, that's something that I believe the commissioners, commission support.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that if we try to do seven days, we're going to have so many lots that aren't ready when we get out there. Because once they draw the permit, then they've got to do all the site prep to get ready for these guys to come. And if, if you want it in seven days, it's not going to happen. If it rains, it's out. So, two weeks, I think, is the reasonable timeframe that we need to shoot for. Once that permit is drawn, and especially with the contractors. So, I mean, two weeks, they're good with that. You know, a residential customer is going to build one house, he don't know if two weeks is good or not. So, but I think seven, seven days or one week is just not going to be productive for the inspections to, to be done on a proper time, because the, the site's not going to be prepared when they get there.
Well, how does, how, thanks for the comment. How does that compare to permitting and inspection? Years ago, we were sitting at six weeks on that, and now, you know, permitting, and then we've got inspection stuff, we've got a seven-day on that as well, and we don't, we don't have an issue with that.
Well, it's a, it's a different animal. I mean, this is entirely different, environmental versus, you know, going out and inspecting a footer, and then going out inspecting the foundation, and then going out doing a framing inspection, electrical plumbing, and HVAC. It's different, because this is done on a chemical basis. What you're talking about with the inspection department is done on a mechanical basis, I guess is what I'm saying. So, you know, they can go out to a house that's been roughed in, and they can do an electrical plumbing and HVAC inspection all at one time. They don't have that type of capability. They go out to do one thing, just like the well being punched. Then they got to go back and see if it's been grouted, and they've got a seven-day period to do that. So, so, so what I'm saying is, I, I don't want to put expectations on to these guys that, that's going to actually be detrimental to them when they get back out there, because the, the site's not ready for them to be inspected.
Well, and I, you're, you are a builder, and I appreciate the, the input. And that's not something that we'll make that decision either, because we don't control that. I mean, you, you know where we're coming from on the quality of service overall that the county gives that helps improve reputation. And, and believe me, the way we have handled things in the past couple of years with our construction process has brought us more jobs, without question. And so, what, whether that seven days is seven days from the, the time they're ready, or I, I get what you're saying. You, I can't walk in there tomorrow with, with, with overgrowth and brush and all this and then expect to have it inspected in seven days. If I got to clear it, dig a pit, get a survey and all that, but I don't think it's unreasonable for us to have a goal of saying, once that client is ready to receive service, that we can do it within seven days. Maybe that's a better way of putting it.
And I like the idea of, of having somebody go out and pre-inspect before you send the, the college-educated technician out there to do his job, make sure that lot is ready for him to be there. I mean, that's a person you're paying them 15 bucks an hour and put them in a truck, drive them around, and let them go look at the lot. I think that's a great idea, because their time is much more valuable than the guy that's going to go look to see if the lot's prepared.
Especially when builders turn away from Rowan and say, you know, I've, I've, well, we've talked about all that, you know, losing subs and all of that. So, Greg, you're right, that might be one of the most valuable things we do. We, we want to commit to you guys that we are committed to you guys, okay? And so, we've said all along, whether it was, whether it was permitting and inspections, we delivered this message. We want to be the best in this whole region, and certainly in North Carolina. And whatever we need to do to help you guys be the best, to give us a great reputation, to make your job easier, we're committed to doing that. And so, you just let us know what you need, and I think you're going to talk to us a little bit. Today, I'm excited about seeing this. Kind of a tech-inquisitive, and so, I'm looking forward to hearing that. So, is there anything else on this for us?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm good.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Are you up next?
I am.
Are you?
I am.
Would you like to sit down first and then get back up?
Sit down, I'll sit down, come right back. Well, I'll stand, I'll just stand.
All right, if you give your name and, uh.
Okay, yeah. Name, address. All right, guys, me again. So, I'd like to, I would like to discuss a little bit about something. So, a little, I would like to give a little bit of background with this. We have, we have a couple folks that we got from other counties that, that actually have used GPS, and the county they came from used GPS every day there and have been for almost the last decade since, since 2011. So, this, in, in with, I also have a GPS in my private sector life that I, I came from. I have a GPS as well, and I, I don't know what to do without it at this point. It, it speeds everything up, the accuracy is, is phenomenal. Kind of go through this. So, what we're looking at is GPS and ArcGIS, which is a software to actually essentially read the data, to be able to turn it into something that's usable for environmental health and what the benefits it could be for us. Currently, we use tape measures, and 300-foot tape measures to be exact, to measure our septic system layouts and locations. After we get to the site, evaluate the soil, everything's marked proper. After we get to the site, evaluate the soil, everything's marked properly, we set a laser up, we shoot in the septic system to make sure each line or potential septic line is on grade. Then we pull out a 300-foot tape measure, and we start measuring either from closest property corners. If we're on a half acre lot, you know, three quarter acre lot, acre lot, they start getting a little more complicated. And as you get more acreage, the harder and harder it is. If we're on a 30, 40 acre track, we have to pick a benchmark. We have to pick something if we're not near a property corner and nail it down and pull all our measurements off of that mark. I've used anything from old telephone poles, fence posts, to oak trees that we hope are going to be there when we come back. So that's ultimately, we end up pulling through brush, and you know, we may have to pull this tape measure twice to get to our point of destination on our closest point. We all know that 300 feet away or 600 feet away is not going to be that accurate. But we're just trying to get as close as we can. What happens is, is Rowan County has such variability in soils that we may be dealing with a pocket of usable material, usable soil to put the septic system in. It's where GPS can come into play. It can nail that spot down from here on out. If we need to go back and put it back, we can put it right back where we got it from originally. So historically, this is something that we would have gotten on a 47 acre track at a time, would literally show a, a potential house location, or house site, building site, and a driveway in. Even the site plans that get submitted to us, you find any dimension on a house that's 7,000 feet off the road, or whatever it may be, is virtually impossible. Nailing that down for us is going to be even harder. So that's where GPS can come into play. This is examples of field notes now. We either take them on a notepad, notebook, with all the dimensions on it, or we do print out a sheet from, from Rowan County GIS, the public website. And it's got a map on it and all. And we can kind of give rough estimates, rough measurements of that. So we do have to take field notes. We then have to turn these field notes into something. This is an old 1988 permit. This shows, you know, how stuff was drawn back then. There's no dimensions, no nothing. So that shows then, this is a 2018 permit. It's the same. Can be, I can't reproduce this today. I can't go out there and show you where that septic system's going to go. There's no dimensions. There's no anything for me to reproduce this other than I have a house, I have a well, a couple boxes. GPS, it can be reproduced. So using today's technology, this is a tremble unit, similar to the tremble unit that we are looking at. It uses GP, it uses satellites that are orbiting the earth. Depending on the GPS receiver you have is going to depend on how many satellites you have access to. You may, you may have access to 20, you may have access to 50. The more satellites that can see you, the more accurate your position's going to be. It's just, just that simple. And you can see it's kind of triangulates you. So you're standing in Rowan County on this plot of land. So this is essentially, as you go to the field, you take your unit, you find your point, you mark it, takes about 10 seconds to record it, move to the next point. You can locate a whole septic system within 30 minutes or less, where before it was taking us hours to do, do the same thing. You bring it back to the office, you download the data. This is a site plan drawn using ArcGIS and GPS data. Lot, lot, lot more advanced than even their 2018 permit. You can see, it's actually got the GPS data overlaid over ArcGIS aerial photography. So you can actually take that off, have something similar to this. This is no aerial photography, but it's still utilizing the ArcGIS platform, which is essentially layers upon layers upon layers. That's where ArcGIS is. And you turn on the layers you want, turn off the layers you don't want. So this shows where the septic system is, repair area, potential site for a well. The previous slide actually showed, you see, it shows a drainage feature. So we've actually identified that. It actually says field-in drainage feature. That, that got filled in. We can actually, since we've GPSed it when it was an actual drainage feature, we can go right back there and say, we know exactly where this thing is, instead of trying to figure out how to find this field-in feature, which the only way to do that is dig holes. And dig holes and determine fill material versus natural material. And it takes a long time to track a field-in gully. But if you've GPSed it first, you go right back to the spot. So like I said, this is one with no aerial photography on it, same drawing with the aerial photograph laid on it. So now, there's no, no, there's a lot of, well, it's not, I can't say no error, but a lot less error for even the septic installer to be able to say where they are in the world. If they need us to put it back, it's something very simple. We go back out, relocate it, pull the map and the data that we had up, put it right back where we got it from. Instead of today, if we had to go back and reproduce a septic layout that will stay in the woods like that, and they cleared the area and cleared all the woods, it would be pulling tape measures and determining back where we were because we have no other way of doing it. And putting it back is a lot harder than measuring and finding it the first time. Field notes, actual soil site evaluation notes. This is a template that was built to be imported into the GPS unit. So as you take soils data and you dug your holes, either via pit or auger boring, you can import it straight into the data. It GPSes it, you GPS out at the same time. So now you know exactly where soil evaluations are, you have your soils notes, and you can print this out. This was created by one of the guys that we got from Davidson County, actually. So the benefit in time saving of GPS versus GIS system, currently it takes around two to three hours, depending soil pending. There's a lot of factors that could go into that. But in general, it takes two to three hours to conduct a soil site evaluation of a property. This could be reduced to one to two hours or less because of the measurements we have to take and reproduction of what we got, possibly doubling the time, doubling the evaluations that we get done. Currently, create a permit to do this properly. We take our field notes, bring it back to the office. It takes one to two hours with pencil and paper to redraw something that's legible. From field notes to a permit, the septic installer can actually read and put it in the ground. GIS, and we could use the GIS, ArcGIS software that other departments have. And GPS site plan reproduction, you can cut that in half, depending on its complexity and what you have to locate. Accuracy, precision, ability to reproduce field work will result in less errors and faster evaluations, which is, we want both of those. So benefits and additional benefits, other departments, planning and zoning, those beautiful pictures that they were able to show you guys, that comes from ArcGIS. They have ArcGIS. We have the ability to, what we locate when a septic system goes in the ground, to share it amongst the county and the ArcGIS software, to where planning and zoning can see it. They can see septic systems. It may be its own layer, but they should, they can see septic systems that we have located that have been installed. So if someone comes in off the street and says, hey, I'd like to build this shop in my backyard, planning and zoning can pull it up, look and say, well, that's where your existing septic field is and your repair area, or the well. You have a well, dead center backyard, you know, we're going to have to do something about that. Preventing time wasted of saying, yep, here you go, you know, go downstairs, apply to environmental health. We get there, pull permits and say, you, there's a septic system in your backyard. You can't build this building here on a half acre lot. Parks and Rec, you can GPS locate features, provide to public accurate maps. Planning and Development, GPS future projects, if there were future projects that need to be used, GPS location instead of outsourcing that, if it's not something that needs to be surveyed grade. You know, something you just need to know, you can import that and create additional GIS layers for that. Information and Technology, utilize data capture to provide accurate data to the public. So with this, like I said, you could actually, if you want to make this ARC available to the public, now this will be a GIS department questioning, but you could actually make this data available to the public. Something I would like to see in the future was to be actually scan our septic permits to make them accessible to real estate agents and to the public because we get a lot of contacts daily for pulling a septic permit, well permit that we might have on this property. So we can list it. If it's available to the public, it'll reduce that amount of work that the admin staff has to, has to deal with on a daily basis. This could just be part of it. Now, as you, as John Q. Public, you would know where your septic system is along with your septic permit. So two of our newly hired staff came from Nateron County. They actually use this every day for the last nine years. I have a similar model, or I've used this similar model in the past. I use it for six and a half years. I have another version of it today. It's very similar to this. It's, it operates off Android platform versus this, which operates off tremble and it was a TerraSync. GPS units are not overly difficult. I use one of the quotes that, that one of the guys in the office used a day, he said he could train a monkey to use this unit. I've used them. They're not that difficult to use. So there should be no little, or no to little increase in backlog for this. We have two people that are, that are authorized, that have actually gone to classes for tremble units and GPS units. They've been used to using them, know how to work ArcGIS software. The other folks, we're going to, we'll phase them in. This is not something I'm going to say, here's an Arc, here's a GPS unit. Start using it right now. You phase these in. It should be little to no impact on the backlog. So the cost estimates of these units, five real-time GPS units is at a cost of $43,500. ArcGIS licensing software is $28,850 total cost of software. Respectfully recommend that, those numbers correct. Those numbers are a little bit different than the numbers we have here. Yeah, so.
Adrian, this is Randy. Those numbers are correct. We had an updated quote from ArcGIS.
These.
The 28,000 versus the 15,000?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, it's a little, little different, a little different than what I had on this paper here. You can see that the, the ArcGIS software is expensive, but it is a necessary requirement to, to, to actually process the data. But the overall cost savings on what we can achieve with this is, is greater, and it brings us into the 21st century ultimately, to where all the private soil scientists that we are, have contracted with, I myself, all the rest of them use GIS or GPS software. Maybe it's different than ARC. They, a lot of them use AutoCAD, but every, surveyors, everybody uses a GPS software now.
Is that software cost a one-time cost, or is that per year?
I believe there's a maintenance cost on that. Now, I'm, I don't know the maintenance cost. I have, I have data here that says $10,000 maintenance cost annually.
There's a one-time cost, Commissioner, and then we'll have to pay an annual fee. And it's at least 10,000 a year.
It's typical. Engineering software like AutoCAD, they do a per seat, per month. So you pay a subscription to it. I think it's around 250 some dollars per seat per month.
You can't even buy Quicken anymore. Off the shelf at Office Depot, you've got to buy it online and then pay for it every year.
So that's what they do. Pirating, I believe, is what happened, is people were buying a CD and then making a copy and giving it to their uncle and their aunt and their brother and their sister. So now they, it's subscription based.
Adrian, is it possible for this information to be posted on a, on a website so the contractor can bring that down after you've come out and designed a septic system, as opposed to having them come back in to pick that up?
They still need a physical permit. I don't know how we can.
Well, I didn't think you'd do this till the permit was pulled.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
You're not going to go out there until they've drawn the permit.
That's right, till they pull the permit.
Well, once they've drawn the permit, my question is, can this be downloaded to a website where the contractor can just get on his computer and see what he needs to do?
I mean, once we've gathered the data and it goes into ARC, sure. I don't know why it couldn't be. Now.
What I'm trying to do is streamline a number of people going in and out the office. If he can get on his computer and go to the county website, or the health department, or whatever, and download the, you know, where he needs to put his septic system, that saves you time, saves him time.
Or just need, just, they email.
We do email a lot of them.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my question.
We email most of them anyway because we want to keep traffic to a minimum possible. So we email everything from septic permits, denials, to well permits. We email about everything.
That's good. Right. So what's the question?
Well, I just want to say, this is great. I mean, this is what we're looking for from you guys. And so, kudos to y'all for doing this. I'm glad you got experience in it, two others. How, how much longer before Tucker's up and ready?
He actually sent in his authorization request today. Now, we're kind of at the state's mercy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, good. Good. This is, we've got the funding source for this.
I'm just curious because I'm glad to see this, but I mean, why haven't we done this before?
I don't have an answer for that question. I've used GPS. I've, I've owned one personally for two years. I've used it many years before that. I'm not, I don't really know. Public sector and private sector tend to be a little off. Private tends to go ahead of, of public a lot of times.
Is, another question I had is, so you got five, five pieces of equipment, five user licenses. Is that, so if one quits working, do you need like a sixth one for a loaner? Or is?
They're pretty hardy. They're about everything you could have in one. They're waterproof, fall-proof. They don't generally break that often. Like I said, I've used mine personally for two years now. I've dropped it, short of everything, running over it. And it seems to be pretty hardy. You know, I mean, yeah, I mean, we don't have, I don't know if we need to have a lot, you know, one laying around because it's pretty pricey.
How, how long does it take to get this equipment in if we approve the purchase?
I would have to get with the Duncan Parnell. That's who we got our quotes from. We'll have to get Duncan Parnell, and then we'll have to get with ARC, which I don't have a working relationship with ARC themselves. Maybe something that Mr. Randy Kress can help us with on that, I'm sure.
A 30-day period would be reasonable?
I would think so. I would think so. Depending on the stock at Duncan Parnell, we'll have to, because that's who we got the quotes from, and they seem pretty willing to get us quotes. I hope they have the units.
So, back to my question. So if you did have one that weren't, wasn't working, I assume it has some sort of warranty with it, you'd send it back. But what would the, so if you had one inspector that had to do it by hand, you can still feed that into the same system?
I, I think so. That would be a, you can draw on ARC without having to import GPS data. So you could actually draw, it may, it was not going to be as accurate, but you could actually draw within ARC. In worst case, we can go back to handwriting the permits. We just have to figure out how to make that all mesh with the ARC. If we go to ARC, I, I don't know. We're going to have to stage its total ARC. You know, if we have a down, machine go down, that we, we maybe, we should be able to hand draw and still import it.
Adrian, what makes this so expensive? The GPS section of it is not expensive at all. You can, you can get that software for a couple hundred dollars a year and find every point that you're looking for. Is, is it the layering of the artwork that you're talking about that makes it expensive?
Uh, yes, it's, it's probably got a lot to do with proprietary. As ArcGIS is a well-known GIS-ing software, so they can charge a lot of what they would like to charge for that.
Do we look at different providers?
The, the software itself, I'm not sure who to get ARC through other than ARC. I don't know if there's another program that could work in tandem. I know that the thing is, is the GIS department in Rowan utilizes ARC, and so do planning and zoning. So I don't know that if we would have ability to change programs or have something that will be able to mesh with them. That I don't know.
We, we have, we have purchasing requirements that we have to go through, and, and the same that we have to go through for software providers. And so, a lot of what you're asking for is already guided by statute. We'll work with staff and purchasing through, through the finance department, who handles that all the time. And so, we'll, we'll put all that together with them.
All right. Any other questions for Adrian? If not, do we have a motion to approve the, approve the purchase of GPS and ArcGIS?
Submit.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You guys are on the right track. You're all, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Good work. Next item, number nine, Nina. Uh, next item, number nine, Nina.
Thank you. I don't have a presentation. I, I have my memo that I've submitted. That should be part of your agenda, um, talking about the port team, the post overdose response team program and, um, trying to continue it. So I, let me just first say that, um, I've spent my entire career, public health career here. I've been in public health for seventeen years, um, here at Rowan County and seven of them I've been, um, health director. Besides COVID, the conversation, the topic that we're about to talk about has been probably the worst epidemic, um, I've dealt with, substance use and abuse and addiction. The AIDS and HIV epidemic was also bad, but I was in sixth, seventh, eighth grade then, so I didn't play a role in, in trying to prevent that. But I have played a, a tremendous role in trying to prevent, um, uh, substance use in our county. And, uh, as you guys know, it's not, it's not a Rowan County issue. It is a national and a, uh, a state epidemic. It peaked, we started to see it, um, in two thousand and twelve and thirteen, uh, in Rowan. It started to peak in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen. That is when we started to see overdoses take place on our, on our streets. People and parents passing out from using in their cars with their children in the back of the seat. Just an, uh, a very, um, difficult situation for all. I'm very passionate about this subject. Um, uh, I've worked with multiple people, um, and agencies, um, to continue this pro, program. And let me back up a little bit. So in two thousand and eighteen, we found a grant through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We applied for it and we were awarded in, uh, the beginning of two thousand and nineteen, about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The purpose of that grant was for us to, um, create a, what is called a post overdose response team or a port. The Commissioners should be familiar with the port. They came and presented, I think in August or September of this year, about what they do and how they help the community. But I worked together with, uh, public health worked together with EMS, uh, with emergency management and with, um, uh, Centers for Prevention Services out in Charlotte. We created a collaboration together and we formed Port. What Port does in a nutshell is when, um, whenever there's an overdose in the county, the Port team will go out. There's three main members. There's a harm reduction coordinator, there is a peer support specialist, and then there's a community paramedic. So those three team members are the boots on the ground. They go out to folks that have overdosed or have substance use issues at that immediate time. A lot of, uh, when they go out, those people have typically just been revived by Narcan. So they're not in the best of moods, they feel awful. They're, when you're revived with Narcan, your high basically is reversed completely. So they, they really don't feel good. But at that point in time, the Port team provides resources. They provide, um, uh, a variety of treatment options, um, things of that nature. And then after about three days, uh, the Port team, um, connects with that person that have overdosed again. And during that connection is when they try to get them into treatment. Detox treatment, uh, provides, uh, harm reduction strategies. We have seen opioid use go from, um, pain, pain pills to heroin. And with heroin, you have, um, uh, needles and syringes and a lot of other issues come with heroin. So you are increasing risk for, um, uh, other, uh, communicable disease like hepatitis C, um, HIV, uh, things of that nature. So the Port goes out and, um, tries to prevent, uh, additional infections and tries to get these folks into treatment.
Nina, can I ask you?
Absolutely.
When, when they send three people out and the person that they're talking to is just near death doorstep, what the heck do the other two people do? They don't talk to him at that dumb point, do they?
So, nope, nope. So, uh, it typically is the community paramedic doing that, that conversation. They are, they are, uh, introducing themselves, or he's introducing the team, introducing, uh, possible resources that that person may need.
Already dead, almost dead?
Well, they're, they've got, we've got to connect that person. The best time, Commissioner, is, is when a person has already had a life-changing situation, which they almost died. So during that time, it opens a, a door, a very small window of opportunity for the Port team to make that contact. And so at that point in time, it is the community paramedic. Once that person says, hey, yeah, whatever, have the other people contact me, it is the other two, about two to three days later, Commissioner, that go in and say, hey, you just almost died, you've had a life-changing situation occur. We are here to offer you whatever resources you may need, whether that is detox or treatment. A lot of times they're not ready for it, but they all ready for, um, counseling or they all ready for group meetings. We have found that there's some success for when that person is with other groups and the best, the most well-known group is AA. AA doesn't work for everybody, but, um, if we can get them to that group, um, uh, therapy, they're more likely to, um, uh, go into detox and or treatment.
And what kind of a percentage are you looking at of these people that we treat?
So there is, um, so I will, there's some information here. So I, I will share, out of, there have been, um, six hundred and ninety overdoses. Out of those six hundred and ninety, three hundred and sixty-seven have successfully been contacted. So about half, we're looking at fifty percent.
Well, what does that have to do with the, the treatment? I mean, the, the folks that changed from this and are not likely to be out there next year being treated the same way? Do you have a figure of any reduction in this because of the Port people?
So there's fifty percent that are contacted. What percentage of those are likely?
So, um, out of tho, out of the three hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and nine have gone to meetings. Two hundred have received some type of resources such as counseling, housing, food, uh, job referrals, healthcare referrals, and seventy individuals have, have received substance abuse disorder detox and treatment.
So in addition, do you really know how many people this is really benefiting other than just giving them stuff?
No, these are, these are the numbers here. Are you looking for specific stat?
You keep giving stuff to and getting them involved in, in AA as an example, but, but you don't know if we're actually helping to prevent this for the future?
It's not a preventative program. It is a harm reduction program. So they're already using and have already overdosed.
It's a what program?
Harm reduction. So they've already overdosed and they're already using. So we go in and we try to, um, get them into treatment so they don't do it any, anymore.
And that's what I'm asking you for, the figures on that.
So seventy, out of that three hundred and sixty-seven, seventy have gone to treatment and detox.
Okay.
So clean. So those are clean. So lastly, um, we have also seen a significant increase in, um, Narcan distribution. So Narcan is a drug that reverses, um, overdoses. So, um, in July, August, September and October of two thousand and twenty, we distributed two hundred and fifty doses and only fifty-five doses the same year. We have, we're seeing overdoses for several issues, for several reasons. And, and I've bull pointed those here. Reasons for overdoses is many, but we're seeing an increase specifically in our COVID, in our COVID time period. And reasons for that is more idle time and la, and lack of healthy, uh, healthy coping skills while experiencing a high amount of stress due to, due to pandemic, struggles and stressors in, increasing for parents having to work and educate their children at home, um, limited social interactions due to the state being shut down, which left people feeling isolated and alone. Access, uh, uh, limited access to substance abuse treatment and care while providers and recovery meetings were transitioning from in-person meeting to virtual. Unemployment increased, which led to stress and fear. People with substance use disorder were provided semi, stimulus checks. A really good thing, but if you don't have proper coping skills and you get twelve hundred dollars, you're going, the first thing you're gonna do is go purchase, um, uh, your drug of choice if you're not in treatment. And then also feel loved ones getting sick and dying. So we have seen a, almost a fifty percent increase in overdoses since, uh, uh, the COVID crisis. So I come to the Commission and, and our leadership because we, um, our grant is running out. That two hundred and eighty-five thousand ends this December. We would like, um, myself, along with, uh, this, we work with Salisbury Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Emergency Medical, uh, Division and the Centers for Prevention Services would like to continue this program since, um, there is such a need still in Rowan County. So I am respectfully requesting from the Commissioners, um, and there's a budget on, on, um, on the screen there. If we could use some of the health departments', uh, Medicaid cost settlement, uh, it would be about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, uh, to continue two more additional years of this, this program all the way through, uh, December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. Do you have any questions for me?
Couple of questions.
Sure.
So I guess in, uh, twenty-one, twenty, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two, we're gonna have two paramedics. Is that why the number is sixty-five?
Uh, Commissioner, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, the community paramedics in twenty-one, twenty-two, it goes up to sixty-five and it goes back down to, um, thirty-two. So are you, you playing for two paramedics for that year?
Just for one. Just one, sir. Just one. So we're looking at, so the two thousand and twenty-one is just half a year. So January through June and then the two thousand and twenty-two, you see July through June of two thousand and twenty-two. So that, that would be a full fiscal year.
Got you, okay. And, um, what was the nu, the number of individuals that had overdosed? It was six hundred and something? Or is that what you?
Six hundred and ninety. We've received, we've had six hundred and ninety overdoses.
Is that six hundred and ninety incidents or six hundred and ninety individuals?
Incidents. So we have had, um, folks relapse.
So how many, do we know how many people?
I can get it. I don't have it with me right now, but I can get that stat.
Nina, how many, how much money is in this account that you want us to pull down, out of?
Uh, I believe it's two point one million.
Can you remind us what that account is for? I, I, I know we've referred to it a lot of that in the last few weeks and I'm just not real sure.
So it's, um, you could consider it a savings account for the health department. So we receive most of our revenue through Medicaid and Medicaid reimburses us less than the private sector. So, um, like if Medicaid, if we billed for a, a physical, Medicaid would reimburse us twenty dollars. But if we build, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield, they would reimburse us fifty. But because of our clientele, the majority of folks that we see are Medicaid recipients. So because, um, we, um, are missing that, that amount of money that we could actually get if we had billed a private person, Medicaid kind of comes in and makes up for it at the end of the year. So what they do is, uh, during the year, we bill, um, for that physical, we get twenty bucks for it. And then towards the end of the year, they'll come in and say, hey, I know, um, you're, you're missing that gap. We will reimburse you basically the difference. So the better we bill, Commissioner, the more money we will get in our cost settlement. So, um, uh, the majority of our cost settlement is dental. Dental does a massive amount of, that's all we take in dental, is Medicaid recipients. So in other programs, we don't. We see Medicaid, we see, um, private insurances. So that Medicaid cost settlement allows us to use money in certain programs where we see there's a need. So for example, you have heard of Medicaid cost settlement a lot in the last month because we've used it for the GPS and we use it for a few other things and now we're trying to use it for, um, this program here.
Medicaid pays less.
Yes. Hey Greg, can you turn your microphone on, please?
I'm sorry, I kind of pushed away. That's a whole other discussion. Medicaid pays less and so we're, we understand that Medicaid, uh, costs less to the taxpayer, but then federal government turns around and actually reimburses.
A portion.
Additionally.
An additional portion.
Yeah.
Yes. So it would not be that full fifty, say. It would, we would be paid twenty, Blue Cross Blue Shield would reimburse us, would, would pay fifty. They might come in and say, hey, we're gonna pay you an additional ten dollars at the end of the year. So it brings it up, but it's not that full amount. It's, it's a weird, it's great for health departments, but it's, it's.
And so is this, is this every year that you get this? So this year, your pot is two point one million.
That is the balance, is that correct, Jim and Aaron?
You don't have to be so precise.
It, it's, it's, um, I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
The, the we funded, the, uh, I can't remember the number, but I'm looking for it as I talk. The restructuring of environmental health, the new positions, the reclassification, the bonuses. We indicated at that time, we would be using a portion of this to pay for it this year and hopefully continuing, so it doesn't increase. So the, whatever the figure was, let's say a quarter of a million for my lack of memory. We'll just say it's a quarter of a million. So we anticipate funding that from, from, from that, from, from the, the savings account and potentially funding that as we move forward, which of course the bonuses won't be in there, um, but it would allow to do that without increasing the budget. We just did another item, which was the GPS, so that's seventy or seventy-five. And then we also talked about using it at the last meeting.
Yeah, but where did you, uh?
The nor, no.
Yeah, it was Narcan, wasn't it? Replenish, it was like seventeen-five or something.
No, that's coming out of CRF, but it.
Was it the, uh, was it the outside, or not, the public or private?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the contracted services with soil scientists.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I.
Which would be like twenty, right? Twenty thousand?
I think it was, I think what the motion may have been is twenty, well, no, I think it was twenty, twenty a month.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Fifty thousand, so, so. So yeah, when I, when I say maybe, we need to look at the numbers. We have been talking about spending it, um, and, and we have intended to spend it. So it may be. It, it's really something that, that's good to look at really hard each budget year as we're, we're going into it to see how much we, uh, you know, can spend and also keep a reserve balance in there if possible.
Okay, let's move on, because I, uh, I can't. Okay, let's move on because I, uh, I can't get, I can't wrap my head around that difference.
Well, and if I may, Commissioner Klusman is, is a supporter of Port and she works closely with Ashley Creek. I don't know if you want to speak on her behalf?
Well, Ashley was here and presented, and I would just say that you cannot have a better peer support person than someone that has been through addiction. And Ashley is an incredible example of that. When you think about her story, when her parents started her drinking beer when she was five years old, and then an incredible amount of trauma that came after that, and then of course more drugs. She gets it and she can relate to other addicts. And she's doing a fabulous job. So, you know, the whole team is. And I would like to make the motion that we approve the 300, $311,528.41 to continue the port program.
I'll second it. I have another question. So the 690, you don't have statistics on how many of those are re, uh, are the same people? Do you know how many of those are considered homeless? Do you have that statistic?
I don't, Commissioner. I can get that, though. I can get that. I just don't have that stat with me. So, yeah, so the 690 is, is duplicated. So I can get unduplicated, meaning how many total people. But, um, because those are the total services and/or how many times they've been out. And some of those people have been repeat people.
Actually, maybe I'm wrong, but you said there were 70 people that went through the program? And that was 50% of the?
70% out of 700 were clear.
Clean, yes.
Clean for some period of time.
70%?
No, just 7, 10%.
Nina, do we have to approve all the way through December of 2022? Can't we drop it back just to June 30th? And see how this program is working before we allocate all this money? I mean, I got a little problem with 10% recovery rate.
That means you got a 90% that we're not affecting at all. How can that be a successful program?
Well, that's why I say maybe we need to not take such a big step and, and look at it at our budget time in 2022 and evaluate it then to see if this is something that we feel like is beneficial. I mean, I don't see anybody die. That's not my point. But a 10% rate, would we maybe look at another program the money would be better invested into?
I agree with you. I, I, I would, I'm not gonna support $311,000 on a program that's 90% ineffective. Well, if we can, if we can go a shorter period of time, like you said, maybe six months to see if there's any improvement or if somebody comes up with a better program.
Well, that, that's kind of my thing. We're putting all our eggs in one basket and we're breaking more eggs than we're saving. So I'm kind of like, is this really what we want to commit to? Because you say it in a nice way, when y'all commit to this, this takes y'all to the next term. That's how far out it is.
Well, and if I, if I, if I may, so it does take a while for the peer support specialists and the port team to get trust with this population. This is a population that is addicted. They're using, they, um, they're selling, um, you know, they're stealing. So they have, this team has to get that, that trust with that population, and it is extremely difficult. Um, so.
Have you been working at this?
Well, we've been funded for two years, year and a half, sir. And so they, they're finally getting there. They're finally getting there. In addition, it's a very specialized population in that when you are an addict, you relapse. You, just because someone offers you help, you're not gonna accept it right away. There's oftentimes somebody relapses over and over and over again. So definitely, Commissioner Pierce, if you would like to reduce the program from two years to a shorter period, we can, we can certainly do that.
I would just like to see some type of evaluation, say at the end of six months, to see if, if we're really accomplishing anything.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I, I realize this money comes in and it's there for a reason, but we don't know what other things might come up. We never expected COVID to come up.
Absolutely, sir. Yes.
Things that could come out of the blue. And then if we depleted our funds, then what we do?
Absolutely.
I'm kind of like Commissioner Green. I'd like to see it on a reduced rate and see, we can evaluate it and see if, if, if there might be another program that would be more successful to fund. That's.
Okay. So I can, depending on the length of the program, I can redo the budget and resubmit. If you want to do it six months, if you want to do 12 months, just, um, let me know what you're comfortable with and I can resubmit a budget to you.
I, I want to say this. I think all five of us have a, um, a heart for this. And this is more evidence of, um, this COVID issue, how it's, it's not just about the positive tests of COVID.
Sure.
That there is this, the unseen devastation and devastation that is not talked about and oftentimes not allowed to be talked about. And so, um, regardless of why these numbers are happening, all five of us have a tremendous heart and passion for these folks to see that they have a chance to break free of, um, you know, these, these chains that they find themselves in. I, I'm, I am inclined to, uh, to agree with, with my other commissioners to say, uh, funding this through our budget cycle for this year is not a bad thing. I think what it does is it shows a commitment and a recognition from this group that we need to help, we want to help. And we don't know what happens between now and June. We're, we're hearing talk of, um, uh, vaccines that could change everything in, in a matter of months. And, um, so let's commit and, and let's, uh, let's help folks. And then let's see where we are.
Sure.
And come back together as a team in June, you know, when we're redoing our budget and, and see what we need to do then. What is, what's the story then?
Sure.
We, we're going out to, to, uh, December of 2022, and we, we don't know what that holds. So, um, so we can exercise some compassion and, uh, and offer some help now. And let's see where we are at next budget cycle. And let's have you back to talk again about, you know, where are we?
Absolutely.
And maybe some of the questions that have been asked here, you know, you'll, you'll come back in, in our budget cycle and, uh, because that's a, that's a good question of how many of these folks are repeat and how do we, how do we focus on that? As a, as a count.
Do, um, let me get up here so you can hear me. No, and I, you know, I agree with you. I see this, a lot of the same people. My work, uh, going back to the same people over and over. I don't know how many. I'm sure the volume is much larger where I work than here, but, um, so according to this, she's looking for funding from January 1st through the 30th. So do we need to, of next year? So we need, do we need to at least prove that tonight? Or do we need to prove that tonight?
We have money through December 31st of this year.
Correct.
So what we would do is say approve 80,000 or so for, um, January 1st through June 30th. Uh, so Commissioner Klusman, you've made a motion and, and we've weighed in. So I want to open it back up to you for you to, kind of, kind of say what's on your mind and, and if you're agreeable to that. So I, I just want to know what you have to say about this.
Yeah. Well, number one is please remember that this is not general fund dollars. That this is specifically Medicaid reimbursement to the health department. It can not be used in our general fund. Number two is that our peer support person and I believe, um, I don't know, our, um, emergency services gentleman, Jeff, has been, I know Ashley has had, she's been contracted, so she has no benefits whatsoever. And to get her up to full time and put her on benefits, my question is, is if we don't follow through on a longer timeframe, is that going to disrupt the ability to continue to pay her and Jeff, to keep them on full time? And so they do have benefits. It is, um, critical to have these people. It may seem like it's not a great working program, but I would tell you that there's different steps for people to get help. And this is one of the most critical ones because it's the first touch. And as Ashley would share with you, it takes seven or eight touches to get them to come to the peer support groups and eventually into treatment. It is a very slow, one step at a time. You know how I always talk about daily steps? And this is most definitely a place where we need to be patient and to grow this program. I think if, if we could get you to do some reading on the different programs that are out there and the success, and talk to Ashley some more and, um, about the success of this type of a team all over the United States, I think you would get very positive reports. Because this is, this isn't something that's just right here or in Carolina. This is, they have port teams across the nation. And so when you look at that, um, the other thing is too, is that it's been very difficult, like for Ashley to do peer support groups because she's been having to do it via Zoom. And to literally not be able to hug or touch or, you know, look someone deeply in the eye as they are sharing their story, it misses a lot. And so I think we need to give them that two years to truly get back, you know, get through the COVID thing. And it's gonna take us quite a while then to bring the use, usage down. I mean, if, if from March until now, it's been a 50% increase. And we're not gonna probably have, get the vaccine until April, May or June after all of the critical people get the vaccine. You know, it's, I hate to cut it short. I really, really do. Um, and, uh.
Well, could, could, could you accept that, um, I don't think that's, the heart of what we're trying to say is cutting it short. I, I think, um, funding this through June gives us an opportunity to, um, to hear back from our health director, to get some results and see, uh, you know, what needs to be changed. Most of us have been involved in business, Jim and, and Craig. And so we, we, uh, I, I don't do anything on a two-year contract because my whole, and I know this isn't business, so I don't want to be accused of comparing this to business. But just from a practical standpoint, I, I don't know what's happening in the world in two years. And so to, to commit to that without the ability of me to adjust, whatever that issue is, whether it's marketing or staffing or, or any of that, it, I think it's just difficult. I think this puts us in a position of strength to be able to say, we're committed to this. But doing it up to June, uh, with the commitment of getting back together with you really forces, um, forces a conversation about how is it working and what tack can we take? So I, I don't look at this as, uh, as cutting it short. I look at it as a good opportunity to, to spend those taxpayer dollars well and to see where we are in a year and, and make adjustments. I mean, it really forces us to, to focus on the, the quality of results and see how do we get better here.
Well, if we're gonna give it a year, I think that we should, should at least give it at least six months after COVID vaccinations will have, um, a lot of people vaccinated. And getting back to life as normal as possible. Because I just.
Okay. Could you put the budget back up then? So what you'd like to see then, what I hear Judy is maybe, uh, as a compromise.
155,000.
Um, as a compromise, we could annualize that 77,000, which would, doubling that would be 150,000. That would get us through the end of, uh, 2021. Would, would that be okay with you?
Yeah, if we can go to the end of '21, um, that would be good.
All right. I'll support that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, no, the December 30th, December 30th, just like they've got now. They're going through December 31st of 2020. We're talking about funding it till December 31st of 2021. It would give us 14 more, well, 13 and a half more months. Would that, Judy, would that be okay with you?
Yeah. Nina, does it, do those numbers work?
Yes, that would work.
Okay.
You're talking about $155,000.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Judy, would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, I will amend my motion, um, by taking out the 311,000 and inserting, um, $155,764.20.
All right. Do we have a second?
I can second you.
A second.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Or no?
No. He's a no, too.
Where'd that come from?
I said six months. I didn't say a year.
All right. All right. Thank you, Judy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Uh, Manager Church. Man, we're gonna set a new record. Maybe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a brief presentation, and then after the presentation is three pages. Of a Word document that should have been emailed out to each commissioner, a revised copy. I'd just like to say that first thing, Randy Chris, he's done a great deal of work on helping me put this together and researching it. But but just. We'd like the commissioners to know that this is, this is just. A plan we put together and and any input from the commissioners or anything you want to change, it's it's your plan. It's the county's plan. And and you're the ones that will be making the decision and have the authority. So if there's something you want to see changed. We can change it at the end of the presentation. We are in 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 somewhat of a. Time crunch. We need, we we need to adopt this sooner than later, so it would be. Most helpful if it could be adopted tonight. But but if 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 the board wants to wait, we can certainly do that. So I'm going to go over the the. The grant program, including the background, the goals, the funding and the administration part, and then the eligibility, which is. Includes the grant. Parameters, the requirements, the use of funds and the documentation required. So the the basic background is that I won't go into the CRF funding because we've all heard about that. I know everyone, all the commissioners are well aware. Can you hear me, Commissioner Klusman?
Yes.
Okay, just checking. I'm on a different, I'm not on the the same microphone. The commissioners are on. So to. You know, we are, all the commissioners are well aware of what the coronavirus relief fund consists of. Within the guidance, there is a section, section five, and it says that it can be used. With expenses associated with economic support. And one of the bullets is expenditures related can be grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business. Interruption caused by required closures. And so that's kind of the background of 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 what this program is built on. The basic goal, proposed goal is to provide grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures. Funding, we're recommending that this program be funded. The total will end up being 385,000, but 350,000 to go towards grants that will be directly provided to small businesses. As no later than December 18th. It'll be a first come, first served basis based on the proposal. The applications would be. Received starting December 1st. I don't know if it's in the the. The Word document or not, but I would recommend tonight if. If if the board adopts this, we do set a time on December 1st, whether it's noon or 5:00 PM. We need to set that probably tonight because being on a first. First come, first served basis, it's going to be good that the public knows what that actual time is. And the applications will be web-based. And again. Checks should be issued by December 18th.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
So. We had 700 applicants. We're going to do the first 70, but they have to be on the web. Can't have any, what if someone has a small business, they they don't use the computer much because they. They can't turn any paper applications in?
The way it's proposed, it's all, it's all web-based. So the applicant, I guess. You you could make a statement that if this is approved or not, that the small businesses are all getting notification that. You know, the applications will begin being received by December 1st. Other than, I mean, you could take paper applications. But I I don't know that they would get here as fast because when we release it. If businesses that are interested apply, it's going to be the first. You know, 70 or 80 or 90 that are received and time stamped electronically. By the computer, but if someone wants to try to bring one in, I guess we would accept it, but.
So another, I guess, part of that is if you have. People that have had this, you know, whatever, small business for 40 years and they're not tech savvy. They're going to get on the computer and try to figure it out. Well, the people that are tech savvy are going to have the application done in two minutes. So those 70 people are going to be pushed in front of the everyone.
The way it's proposed, that's right, unless they drive really fast. You know, if we wanted to do. You know, if. I mean, we could, we don't have, again, we don't have to do it the way it's being proposed. I mean, I guess another option could be. We could, you know, take applications December 1st or December 6th and then randomly, you know. Select the applications.
We're not going to do this anyway. We got a third party that's going to take.
Well, the only, the only part that we're going to do is going to be. Accepting the application, timestamping them and then. Turn them over.
Well, to satisfy Mike's question, could we make some applications available in the clerk's office? Or some, or to be downloaded. And then delivered, because they're going to be delivered back to us electronically, right? And and they'll be time and date stamped. So to satisfy Mike's question, could we also allow them to deliver them? To the office here and we timestamp them physically? I mean, I know it complicates that.
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly. We we. We certainly can do that. But but then you're given the, I guess, sort of 20 people. You know, fill out a paper copy and they bring it in, it's going to be time stamped as the person receives it. So if there's 20 people in line, you know, the first person in line is going to get theirs time stamped at. Noon, and at the same time, you're going to have people online applying. Who are hoping, you know, you're probably only going to get one or two that are standing in line that's going to get theirs in before. Citizens or businesses that may be applying on online. I mean, we certainly can do that.
We could make it available. There it is.
So I mean, it could be if 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 we wanted to. You know, the the day before, two days before, you know, make available a paper copy, somebody wanting to come pick it up and fill it out. And bring it back at, you know, whatever time we decide to not, then it would be the first person that that hands to hand delivers it. Would get it time stamped and then if there's anybody waiting in line behind them, you know, they'll have to wait and theirs will be, you know, let's say it's noon at 12:02. The person behind them, 12:03 or whatever.
I think that Mike, you raise a good question. I think that prevents. You know, provides opportunity for everyone and may prevent. The accusation that we didn't make it available to everyone in case there's some folks that. Don't have access completely to internet. So can we? I know that adds a little step. I don't know that you'll have a whole lot of people that would. Come pick, pick up an application, fill it out, deliver if it was.
Yeah, you're right.
What what's the maximum that we're talking about?
50,000.
Yeah, but. There's no limit on the number.
Money's at 3,500, so technically 100 people, but there's also a second plateau for those that have more employees at 5,000. So it's going to be a mix. You're not going to know. It'll be anywhere between 75 and 90 people or businesses.
I was trying to get at.
So we, that that's one thing we want to add. Jim, if you could, if you could, if you could add, you know, when this is adopted, one. Addition to it is there'll also be paper copies accepted. You know, at 130 West Inn Street at the county manager's office. By either the, you know, county manager, assistant to the county manager. Or clerk to the board. And there'll be, you know, we'll have a. You know, whatever time is decided by the board, there'll be, you know, there'll be a line that will start. At at the county office building and it won't be. If you want to go ahead and put noon. So if they want to get here, you know, 8:00 AM and wait in line until noon. They may be the first one and that one. Probably will, you know, get approved, but you know, then you get to who's in line first, but.
Mr. Manager. Before I fall asleep. December the 5th and 6th is Saturday and Sunday. Yeah, but if you're doing it online, it don't matter. Well, I know, but we just brought up the question Mike brought up and so I wanted. Think anybody that's going to do a paper application is going to be here on the first day. Going to have it here on Friday. First day. They'll be here on the first day to turn it in because they know it's first come, first served. That's fine with me. I just wanted to. Bring to your attention, are we, are we okay with noon as the start time? I don't want to do it to them at 9 o'clock since they walk into the door, they're inundated by all those people.
Okay, so move to the next slide. 10% fee to the Chamber of Commerce to administer this program at $35,000. The county will manage the website application and the hand-delivered applications with timestamps and then we'll provide. You know, the first, you know, 100 in 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 the time received or, you know, X amount of applications to the chamber. They'll screen, verify, collect documentations. And and disperse the funds. So the, so a check for 385,000 would be written to the chamber. You know, very soon, once this is approved and then on. By December 18th, the funds would need to be dispersed. Next, next slide. So 3,500 is, would be. For 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 any employer with one to five full-time employees and now in the actual policy that the board, this is just a, this is a. In actual policy, the board is going to be voting on, it says, or sole proprietor or something to that effect. And then 5,000 to any employer with six to 25 employees. And then if you have over 26. Full-time employees. You, the business would not be eligible and the count. Is as of March 1st. Next slide. Okay, so I put a question mark here and it's in the policy and it was on the slide, but I was thinking. I I thought today and and. Previously, we had brick and mortar demonstrate that the brick and mortar location was required to close. At least two weeks. And then I put in parentheses originally, and the current policy says governor's orders. Due to the governor's orders, but. That that may be too strict. I mean, you could have a sole proprietor that, you know, was diagnosed with COVID and went into. The hospital. And, you know, they were required to close too. So, you know, I was just thinking of 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 different things. There may be some businesses that the governor did not require to close. But the businesses did anyway because there were other forces that forced them to close. So that may not have been the best idea.
Talking about brick and mortar now and. What if somebody closed their office that folks worked from home? Are you saying that the business stopped altogether or the business was padlocked for two weeks?
Yeah, I think what the intent is now, whether we get to the intent or the spirit of the. The program is for those that had to stop working and producing income for themselves, such as. A barber shop, a restaurant, a dentist that that may have. Been been forced to close. Gims. Salons.
Bars.
Commissioner Pierce had a comment.
I said the bars.
I did, I didn't hear him.
The bars.
Not, not to him, bars, yeah. So. You know, that that that's the intent. So is that they were not able to make money during that. And if you go back up. To the very, to the second slide. You know, the federal guidance says that expenditures. To reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closure. So. I, you know, I don't know if that's what that that means and I may be interpreting it wrong. So. Your example, if they closed, you know, closed their brick and mortar and went home and worked.
They had continuous business, in my opinion.
They had continuous business, so.
So what about, I don't know, say a wedding planner that works out of their house? Now the weddings are canceled because you can't meet more than 10 people now, but they can't apply because they don't have a storefront.
Based on the way this is written, they would not receive, they would not be eligible.
Written by the federal government or?
Written by Ann Church.
Oh.
And Randy Chris. And y'all can change, y'all can change that.
If they had a lawn care business and then they've lost business because. The restaurants shut down that they used to cut the grasses for and they work out of the house, they can't apply either.
That's right.
Man, I don't, you know, it seems like, it seems like we're letting, there's a lot more people that are affected than people that just had. Brick and mortar businesses.
I think. Well, you have to. To me, you have to have some type of parameters there or you'll have every body that sells Mary Kay cosmetic supply. I mean, that's my point, you know, at least they're a storefront business that was forced to close. And I'll use a barber shop as a great example. You know, my barber said, can't cut your hair. He was shut down for two and a half months. So he's still paying rent. The idea is they're paying for storefront that they, not only are they not making any money. But they're having to pay overhead out or a brick and mortar front that they had, they didn't have a choice. They were told to close. So so I I don't want this to become somebody that has always worked from their home and all of a sudden they're going to. Strike it rich here because of this program that comes out, they've always worked out of their house. I mean, there's a lot of people that do that, but to Jim's point. I got friends in the insurance business too, and that's exactly what they did. They closed their storefront, but they had all their employees work from home. Because the majority of the communications came in either over the phone or online, which didn't prohibit them from continuing to make money.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, people were from home and they've they've been devastated by this too. It's not just people that have businesses.
I I'm not saying they weren't. I'm simply saying that the people that I think deserve the most relief are the ones that continued to pay in overhead. For a storefront with fire bill and internet bill and all that other stuff, and they're not afforded an opportunity to make any money. I mean, you know, you go back to the guy cutting the yard, guy cut my yard, kept cutting my yard out the whole time during this this thing. Because he's outside, so he's he's in good shape. But, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying there's going to be exceptions all the way through. We can't hit every point. I just want to hit the majority of those folks. That were negatively affected.
Jim, we go to the next slide. So this is something, I mean, well, before we go, I mean. We need to decide whether it's due to the governor's orders and what's closed, you know, and to Commissioner Kasky's point. At, I guess, at the end of the presentation. I mean, this something's been difficult for me and it may not be written, written the best way it can. We need to. Decide on the, on this at at the end.
I I understand what Mike said. Everybody has suffered. Everybody has suffered. There are some that had. Locations where words were locked. Were not allowed to walk into their place of business. Were not allowed to walk into their place of business. I guess another thing to consider is those folks didn't get a break on paying their property taxes. Different. You've got, I mean, think of the bowling alley, right? They don't have, they'll probably, this guy's already looking now to download an application now that it's a bowling alley, but that guy's still paying property taxes. Still paying, he's still got to keep the place heated and cooled. He's not working out of his house. So I don't think this is saying that there's anybody that hasn't suffered through this.
I, I think I, I have great sympathy for everybody that's been affected by this. But from an administrative point of view, we're going to have to have some sort of rules so that whoever's administering this thing can say, this is what I need to see, to see if you qualify. If we don't, it's, it's going to be awfully hard for anybody to administer this.
How are you, I mean, just asking, how are they going to verify that there's brick and mortar? Is somebody going to drive out there and see a business or are they going to look in the phone book and see there's an address? They can provide some sort of deed?
They're going to have to provide their tax return, which will have that street address on it. And that will ensure that not only they were in business, but that they have a, a street address.
Well, if you work from home, aren't you going to have a street address on there?
Most definitely you would.
What about businesses that use P O boxes and have a brick and mortar store?
Like I said, that's for the administrator to deal with.
Well, I mean, I'm going to vote for the program because I think we need it, but I, you know, I don't like this part of it.
But look, can we come back to that, that part of it? Okay. So businesses, what's proposed will not be eligible if, if, if they meet any of the following. If they've been bankrupt in the last three years, if they have any open judgments or tax liens, if they have delinquent Rowan County property taxes, if they're not-for-profits, or if they're a real estate investment firm. Next slide. Funds may be used for legitimate business expenses. This includes, but is not limited to working capital lease payments, existing real estate and equipment financing payments and payroll. I guess one thing to, to, you can go on to the next slide about the use of funds is there's no, this is a, a grant that is not paid back. You know, it's, it's a, and I guess that for the citizens and, and for the media, that's, that's the important thing. Is that it's, it's not a loan. It is a grant that is not paid back. So documentation, the online grant request application, which now is, is be slash paper application. Then a statement describing how COVID nineteen has adversely impacted the business, including dates and times that the business was closed, most recent tax returns, and then the payroll IRS Form nine forty-one are equivalent. Next page. And then here's the, just so it would be in the record in the minutes, this is the actual word document that was, the second word document that was revised and sent out to the commissioners. So to summarize everything, if, if the board made a motion right now to adopt this as presented, but we'll forget about the addition and the other stuff we're going to talk about Commissioner Kasky brought up. If, if you voted to approve this as presented, we would begin putting the application process together. We would get an MO, Elaine from the chamber has already sent a draft MOU to the county. We would work on that, get that in process. It would go into the newspaper tomorrow or, or the, or the next day that the, the, the paper is, is printed. That the application process will start on December first at noon and end December sixth at noon. In its first come, first served basis, once the applications are received, they'll be immediately given to the chamber and the chamber will have between December sixth or the seventh through the eighteenth to make sure each one of these applications are eligible based on the requirements we have. And then a check would be issued to the business. Now skipping forward, an agenda item, the next or the second, the next agenda item. If you approve this plan, we also have to go back and revise our CRF plan, which is on the agenda to do. And that's to say that we're now including a small business grant, grant plan. But, but with that, you know, that, that's all I have. And, you know, there are some things to discuss. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to the board.
So this is going to come up?
And Elaine is, is, is on Zoom.
This will come up sure, sure, sure as we're sitting here. Is it first come, first served? Where are their applications in good order? Or, I mean, you, you know what I'm driving at there. So if application number four just filled it out and didn't provide any of the documentation that we needed, we continue to work with that person or since they didn't provide the information that was needed, does that will get thrown out? That's something we're going to come up against.
I mean, that's.
Do we just work with them to get up until the dates that we would?
Well, you, you can, you can take them in provided they made an attempt. My, my first question is, and not, not to get off subject, when is this application going to be posted? Because if you wait till the first at noon to post it, well, everybody that's filled out a paper was way ahead. Because they walk right in and get it day, day stamped to be done.
We, we can, we can like, we can publish the, the, the paper copy PDF on the website and make it available. You know, several days before the application process starts.
What I'm looking at is I looked at that application, the format, and you're asking for tax records. Okay, how are they going to post that online? Is it going to be set so that they can scan it, put it on there? Or, I mean, how's it going to be worked?
So, so the application process and, and, you know, thi- this isn't documented, but how I envisioned it is would only be the application. And then the chamber's job would be getting all the backup documentation that would have to match what the application. But what we could add, and Jim, if you want to put this as a second amendment to the proposed, is that first come, first served for completed applications. And that, and that means, you know, we can have, I mean, inevitably, somebody's going to get upset throughout this process because it involves money and it involves, some are going to receive it and some won't based on the circumstance of who applied first the right way. But we can put really specific instructions that each application has to be completed. And if you're going to leave a blank, you need to put in a non-applicable. And if that application comes in and it's not completed, then, you know, it, it, it won't be on the first come, first served basis. We also, Randy, are you, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Presumably we can, the, the, the web application can create a document that will allow them to receive confirmation that they applied as well as a copy of their application.
Yes, sir.
So they would have, they would have evidence that, you know, they, they, they indeed submitted it at, you know, such and such time. And by the way, here's a copy of what you submitted. So if, if for some reason there's a question about, you know, who submitted what, when, everybody should, you know, have their email receipt and their application, a, a copy of their application. To where it would, we, I mean, to where county staff would not be able to manipulate who came first or second or third or fourth, et cetera.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Have we addressed Mike's question though?
No, that's, that's the most difficult question to, to address. I mean, I, you know, I talked, you know, I've talked to probably each and every one of you about, about that to a certain degree. I mean, it is, it is hard to determine because then you say, what's brick and mortar? I mean, and, you know, it's a, it's a slippery slope trying to define it because.
You could use the term storefront instead of brick and mortar. That, that means it ain't working out of your house. It's a storefront.
I think storefront is, I mean, I just think more that retail than if you had insurance or, I mean, insurance, but if you have business where you don't have customers coming over.
Oh, you're saying they don't have no customer? Is that what you say?
Well, that's why I changed it.
Randy, is there, I'll just go ahead and ask this, is there ability to accept download documents on their applications or does that just get into too much?
We can discuss that with the chamber because I understand where Manager Church was going at with that, that we may want those documents to be something that they work with, but of course, we can do whatever is needed. But yes, you can actually do document uploads from that standpoint. I would just want to make sure that there's no way to verify the document type. So, I mean, it could be one page of a ten-page document or something to that effect. So there might, it might generate more administrative overhead.
And, and one of the documents is tax returns and that's probably something, if we can avoid having tax returns, you know.
On our side.
Yeah, on our servers, then, then that.
So that just, I mean, it just really brings into question how this process is going to work. And I know Elaine's on there and we want to make this as easy as possible. But if folks are going to fill out the application online and some folks are going to come pick up an application ahead of time and, and bring it up. Of the folks who fill it out online, there's no technology capacity for them to upload their documents. So what's going to have to happen is they'll have to bring those to the Chamber of Commerce and match up with the applications. I don't know that that's a bad thing.
So isn't there, if I saw that earlier, they have to have the checks out by the eighteenth. And so we're, we're going to end applications on the sixth, which I guess is Sunday, is that what Jim said, Saturday? So they only are going to have a week or whatever, twelve days to verify whatever information they have to have. Mary, or is it going to be a thing where they're going to have to bring each person in to go over their packet with them? Or is all this going to be done over the phone?
Is the eighteenth the legal date or are we just doing that so we can make sure the documents?
That's Aaron Church's date. And, and I'll tell you why I picked it is because that, that's on a Friday. We can move that out. And I know Elaine, you know, we've spoken and she, that's a very close timeframe, but the next week you've got, you know, Christmas Day is the next Friday. And then I, I think the funds have to be dispersed by the thirtieth.
Thirty first.
I, I would think so. I, I would think just.
Let me, let me ask this, I mean. But today's the sixteenth. Instead of looking at moving it back, can we move it forward any?
Yeah, Randy, if I said if you started by moving it, I'm, you want to do it sooner.
I'm unable to hear Manager Church. I don't think he's speaking in the microphone.
Well, I know that you're, you're, you excel at the art of committing other people. Randy, we want to hear from you. Is there a possibility of launching this quicker than December first?
We are at November sixteenth now. Yeah, I mean, you could push it into next week, but it would still look good to have that at, you know, at latest on the twenty-seventh. I mean, we, we need to make sure that the details are good. It, it really shouldn't be that much of a process, but we also want to make sure if there's going to be a paper version, that we have that paper printed form as well. But no, we're, we're, we're pretty adept at this. I mean, I give kudos. I've got great staff that can do that.
Thanksgiving, they won't be able to be here.
Yeah, and I think that might have been the other reason. Thank you. I'm not seeing that on the calendar I'm looking at. So yes, that's right. Nobody will be here.
Yeah, it'd be the day to turn your application.
Jerry, is there, is there something specific in this email that, 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 that answers Commissioner Kasky's question?
Yes. I agree, but, you know, Durham started the same small business property act program. And I just think the guys at Leaning, the guidelines with appropriate details are qualifying business. It doesn't do it under basis, but it's less than twenty-five employees, less than five hundred thousand dollars a month. But it goes through a checklist of, of things that you have to need. It goes through a checklist of non-qualifying businesses. Nonprofits, real estate, investment firms that have, it just has a nice sort of bullet point program to just sort of talk a little bit about what we got to talk about. Anybody else want to go?
So Randy, what date did you think we could be ready to go? Did, did you give us that date?
Yeah, apparently.
I know that one point of, of nervousness for the chamber is the, the real tight timeframe. And if, if we're doing these applications online and in person, they still have to gather all of the supporting documents and to do that in one week if we have between seventy and a hundred businesses. One thing we, we appreciate that the chamber is, is stepping up as, as they have a lot. Them and tourism and tourism and the EDC has stepped up a lot during this COVID crisis. So what we don't want to do is put them in a really bad spot that could damage in any way their, their place in the business community.
Mr. Chairman, what about November thirtieth? That's a week.
Do you mind if I?
Out from where we were. That's on a Monday.
Well, I was going to propose a earlier date if, if you don't mind. I've just checked in with our team.
Well, it's got to do it.
I know, exactly. So, yeah. And plus, it would be really good to have this done and behind us before going into Thanksgiving. So I would say if we look at the online going live on November twenty-third at noon, and then if we could have the print version on Friday by five PM or end of day. Now, the thing I'm concerned about is making sure where we're going to have that print copy that someone can pick up. There's a logistics issue there.
Well, doesn't it mean they've got to pick it up by five o'clock on Friday?
Friday, I mean, in the twentieth?
Yes, I, because I really, I'd like to get through the week. I mean, I, I could say, you know, I could say you could pick it up on a Friday. The problem with that is, is you have two normal weekend days there. And then if you start getting into that week of the twenty-fifth, that's a half day. So even if we pushed out to the, like the twenty. of the 25th, that's a half day, so even if we pushed out to the, like, the 24th at noon, which would be a Tuesday, that would mean you could have it all day for pickup on Monday.
So make it available on the 23rd for pickup, and then it would go live online on the 24th?
That is correct, and, and also, yeah, and also, the downloadable PDF would be there as well, so if anyone was intending to fill this out online, they would be able to do that, and go ahead and get that copy and understand what the questions were.
All right, well, when would you be able to turn in the paper copy, then? Pick it up on the 23rd, you technically can turn around, fill it out, and turn it right back in.
How about if we just make them both the paper copy and the online copy available at the exact same time? Because the, the folks on the online copy, you're going to have to wait till the next day.
That's my.
And if I'm a smart guy, I'm going to pick it up the day before, and before the online even goes online.
I'm going to turn it in.
I'm standing there the next day with, with mine, and so I've, I've gotten a head start, so can we just make both available at the same time, that way we advertise it, folks know that it's going to be available on either the 20th, if it's the 23rd, it's the 23rd at noon, if it's the 24th, it's the 24th at noon, it goes live online, copies are outside Carolyn's door on a, on a, on a desk or something.
She's got a desk there now.
Got a desk there now, they can come pick it up, and everybody gets it and can go to work on it at the same time.
That sounds like a plan.
And then Randy, you just tell us the 23rd and the 24th.
Well, I'll defer to Manager Church, just to make sure if there's a particular date or time with other items going on, I know that's not a BOC meeting day, so I'm fine with either.
Randy, if you can have it available by the 23rd, then the longer, the better.
Okay, that'll be fine.
So Manager Church, could we just make it, it goes live and becomes available physically at noon on the 23rd?
Yeah, when, when, when are you talking about? What's, what's the deadline?
Deadline would be the same, I would think. Yeah, the 6th.
Whatever that Friday is.
When can they first start submitting their application, what was that day?
Mon, Monday, the 23rd.
The 23rd.
Yeah, they want to sit out, oh, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, do you want to shorten that time for the chamber to be able to review, or are we just handing, oh, well, actually, we're giving the chamber information as it comes in, so that gives them the ability to start seeing it immediately.
Yeah, I, I imagine about 24th, the chamber will have, I, I, I imagine they'll go over the applications that, we will have to overstay the application until 4. And, and it's just going to be a matter of they do it, if they, if they completed that application fully, and the, the, the time span, the chances of a weak decision to disperse.
Is your requirement going to be that, that they have to have the taxes before they, they stamp them and put them in line? They just have to fill out the application?
Fill out the online application.
And then the chamber can get them to bring in the taxes and the other things after that?
Yeah, so, what I wish is that, you know, let, let's say, you know, it's 3,500, if, if, let's say we send the chamber our first 100 applications, okay, then at that point in time, the chamber would go through and start talking, you know, if, if they have, you know, it's going to depend how many there are, so based on the number of employees or businesses, it's going to, which way, between 5 and 3,500, so let's say it's 85, first 85, and they, and, or let's say they go through the first 100, and they only have 50 to qualify, we'll send them, you know, 100 or more to go through. But, yeah, so it, it does deny to, to the county, there's many, and I don't think Randy, if the chamber will start on 24th, that, that's right, I mean, the only thing that matters to us is the money is dispersed.
All right, so let's be sure about this, because there's, people are going to get mad.
Yeah, I'm used to that.
The 23rd will make it available at noon, people can come in this office and pick up an application, and they'll see it online live at noon. When they start returning them, either electronically or physically, they'll either be dates, they'll be time stamped electronically, or they'll be stamped by our clerk or whoever's there at, with a date and a time on it, then those will be given to the chamber, and the chamber will have between the 23rd and the 6th acquire the, the right information. So that, they're going to be able to work with those folks between the 23rd and the 6th, because some folks aren't going to give all, they're not, they're not going to have their whole, but we just heard Environmental Health saying folks just aren't ready. So we're going to have some folks who just don't have all of their stuff at the first go-around, when they give them what they think is right, but they're missing something. So the chamber has up to the 6th, these folks aren't going to lose their place in line, the third person that turns theirs in, they've just got to get it in by the, by 5 o'clock on the 6th. And after that, if you don't, if you didn't have your stuff turned in by then, you're out.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, that gives us, that gives the chamber an opportunity to work with everyone between the 23rd and the 6th to get the proper documentation. If, if, and they'll be able to coach those folks on that, if they don't provide adequate documentation by the 6th, then we're moving on to the next person. Is that right?
So that's what you're saying, if they don't have it by the 6th, then they'll go to the 71st person, or whatever it is? I get you.
That sounds simple. No, it, it does. I mean, that's how PPP worked.
Yeah.
You know, there, there was a, there was a deadline, and if you didn't have your stuff there, they're out of money. They didn't hold, they couldn't hold a spot for you.
All right, so do we need, we don't need a motion on that, do we? Just need to instruct the manager to move forward and hold with those dates?
Yeah.
And.
That all stays.
The 6th, 6 by 5.
Yeah, you got those stuff for a good day, and if that's 20, add a minute based on.
Your first number of certifications is better.
Yeah, and the whole, the very first. Yeah, but then there was this, uh, second.
Mike's concerned about breaking mortar.
Yeah, but we still haven't.
I mean, I can see a flood of applications coming in, so I'm going to show through if we still have time, and several applications have occurred every single, the applications are, you're going to get 5,000 applications.
I mean, I, I just think we're trying to help the people who have facilities and employees and.
And Elaine from the chamber is still on the call, if you'd like to consult with her.
Chairman Eds, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
First, I just want to say thank you to the county for considering this small business grant program, it is desperately needed in our community, and I think that the intent is really to help those businesses that were impacted by the closures, to try and keep all of our community safe, but those businesses that were impacted the most, and it was really the hospitality industry, you're talking, you know, the restaurants and facilities that had to close, that I think really are going to benefit from this the most. So there are lots of good examples of other county grant programs similar to this, and I know our chamber executive committee had some concerns about all the details, so if you could maybe allow a couple of our business leaders to sit down with the county staff and work out all of those kind of details, so that it's a fair program, and that it really helps those businesses that have been impacted the most.
You know, Elaine, I think that's a great idea, I mean, what we're doing now, we're trying to, can you put her back, oh, she's, she's there, we're just trying to figure out how to make it easier on you at this point, it's not so much the policy of who gets it, I, I think we're trying to take the question out of it, so it, it's approving these as a, so I think what you're saying is, you know, can we pass it with the improvements or changes that we've made, and also ask the manager to sit down with you and some of your executive folks, and, and pound out any further details that, that are processing details, and I, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I have a problem with it.
That, does that work for you, Elaine?
Yes, sir.
So that, we're going to instruct staff to work with Elaine to come up with a final application according to the parameters that we've listed?
Okay, and let me throw, this is off track now, but I've been, I've been meaning to say this since Elaine is on here, can you put her back on the screen for us? So, just a few weeks ago, Elaine was named as the universe's top chamber executive for the entire universe, is my understanding.
That's not quite accurate. It was for the state of North Carolina.
Okay, so Elaine was the top chamber executive for the state of North Carolina, she was surprised by that, she didn't know she was getting that, and was at some event, and they presented that to her, and so, good for you, real proud of you.
Thank you, sir. Our chair of the board, Gary Blavon, president of Novant Health Run Medical Center, was the one who nominated me, so I'd like to thank him, and thank all of our board members, and especially our staff that works very, very hard, it's a team effort.
Well, congratulations, and I'm glad you're here and not in Paducah.
I'm glad you brought me here.
Yeah. All right, so, 10 more seconds, I want to make sure the public understands about this money. The federal government, through their CARES Act, has passed down about $5 million plus to Royan County, and we have until December 31st to distribute those funds through projects, through purchasing, safety equipment, all of that, and so, one thing that we are allowed to use that money on is programs like this to help our small businesses, so this is not coming out of Royan County's budget, this is money that if we don't spend it, goes back to the federal government, and so, we see this as an opportunity to help our small businesses out, so this is not a budget item, this is CARES Act dollars. All right, so I don't want to restate those changes, can we just make a motion to approve the CRF, CRF Small Business Relief Fund with the changes that we've talked about, and to ask staff to work with the chamber to work out the processing?
Sure.
Yeah, if, if, if Jim could, well, with the changes there, with one exception, you said December 6th, if we could make that December 4th, because, because the 6th is on a Saturday or Sunday.
Yeah. 4th, yeah, 4th, yeah, December 4th.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Judy is still with us?
Yep.
Okay, all right, motion, the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? All right, thank you, Judy.
Yep.
Yep. All right, Finance Department, CRF update.
Microphone's not working.
I was going to say, just give me all of them.
Appreciate it.
Carolyn, can you drive me to Woodleaf tonight? Now, who can I just just? Heather. Or, you might not have 100% attendance, but you may have a floor. You ain't going to have a little bear in there. Yeah.
Are you ready? Good evening, commissioners, what you have in front of you is the summary of where we are today with the CRF monies and what we have spent. What's on the screen is a summary, so we still, the 5.3 million was our original budget, the 13th, we spent 3.6 million, which leaves us roughly 1.7 million to spend. Here's the categories that we are forecasting to spend between now and December 30th, 780,000 in construction, another 73,000 in PP&amp;E, Narcon purchase of 34,000, testing of 252,000, dedicated employee expenses of 285,000, technology of 276, and this small business grant that we just talked about, 385,000. So total forecast of right under 2.1 million, which would actually have us spending $391,000 more than the budget. Explain it?
And so.
Yeah.
Okay, so what is happening here, my understanding is, a, a lot of the dollars that we're using to reimburse employee expenses for the county, the county has shouldered the majority of the labor around the COVID thing for the municipalities and all that, that, that's, so we, we've got a lot of labor reimbursement that we can legally reimburse, these are folks that we're already paying, already part of our budget, so we're just going to forego some of that reimbursement in order to fund this small business grant program.
If, if we have to.
If we have to.
Because, because some of this is forecast, and there's, you know, some of it may or may not be spent, this is a way, we think, and we certainly hope, to make sure we spend every last penny.
Next slide.
All right. The, the next slide is more, it's just detail of the summary, we can go through it line by line, if you, no, or maybe not.
No, I don't know that I can see it.
It is very small, I do apologize for that, Commissioner Green, that, that's the update on the, the CRF funds, and the same way has questions or anything they want to discuss.
Well, your cover sheet is a summary.
Yes, sir.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it ties back into all the detail, which is on page two and three.
If you get all that construction money spent, you're going to be doing, somebody's going to be doing a good job.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll see you again in two weeks on that, maybe we won't have a seven-hour meeting, we can indulge page two and three. We can indulge page two and three again, would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Jim. Uh, let's see, item 12. So now that we've done this, we need to revise the CRF plan, so, Aaron?
Yeah, the revision, can I see the paper copy? This is basically just, this will be the, I believe, our third revision. We had an initial plan, a second plan. If you will look online, if you're looking at page one, two. On the fourth page, number five is expenses associated with the provisions of economic support. It's basically just amending our plan. If the board approves this tonight, we will submit this to the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office tomorrow, the next day, which will allow us to implement the small business grant program.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
You got to let me get it out first. Do we have a motion to approve the revised CRF plan?
So moved.
All right, Craig, Jim, second.
No.
No? No? You'll second? Mike? Second, Mike, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Judy will be good when you get back here, so you can keep Jim in line.
Apparently.
And then I think 12A, Judy, you're on.
Okay. We have a resolution this, tonight called Combating the COVID-19 Pandemic. And before I start, I want to thank all of our staff that has been a part of the planning and executing of all of pandemic plans and the testing. And, I mean, it's just been one thing after another, and it's been a trying time. And I want to thank those staff. So, here we go. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic is spreading exponentially through our nation, state, Rowan County, and its municipalities. And whereas Rowan County currently has over 700 people with the coronavirus and has had nearly 5,000 people infected this year and had a daily record of 82 positives on November 12th. And whereas 124 Rowan County families have suffered deaths of loved ones by the coronavirus in 2020. And whereas people are preparing for the upcoming holiday season with travel and gatherings of friends and family. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners urges citizens of Rowan County to practice the safety measures recommended by public health professionals and take action to prevent the spread of COVID-19 to protect yourself, your loved ones, and your community by observing the three W's. Wear a face mask, wash your hands, and wait at least six feet apart from anyone outside your immediate family. And be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners encourages citizens to avoid the three Cs so as to protect every citizen in Rowan County. Please avoid crowded places, close contact settings, confined and enclosed spaces, especially with poor ventilation. This, the 16th day of November 2020.
All right, thank you, Judy, and you make that in a form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second, all right, Craig, second. Any discussion?
I just think, just to reiterate, this is a resolution.
Yep.
We're not passing any ordinances or any laws.
No, 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 no mandate did anything, Mike.
Judy, you're right, we do need to say a big thanks to everyone that continues to work in this. There's so much going on. I know that every day, April sends out this very information that we're going to pass as a resolution. The Health Department sends out this, this information. Healthy Rowan sends that out. I understand now that we've embarked on a billboard advertising campaign. Let's see, I had some data on that. We'll have nine billboards around Rowan County with, with, with these, this messaging that we talked about here today. These locations will generate a total of 1,356,213 impressions per week for a total of 10,849,704 impressions over an eight-week campaign period. So we're certainly working with the Board of Health, Healthy Rowan, and, and the county to continue to tell folks in Rowan County, just be smart, be smart, be smart. And hopefully, here soon, we'll, we'll beat this. So Judy, thank you for bringing this to us. I know that other municipalities are considering this as well. So we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, none opposed, and so, thank you very much, Judy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
If I could just remind the public and remind my colleagues that the best way for getting people to be safe is for us to show them we're wearing masks and we're doing all the things that we need to do and to encourage others to do that. With family gatherings over the next few months, folks are to be around a lot of elderly people. And even though your family members wear masks to protect them.
All right, thank you. All right, so good message, we'll move to item number 13. This should be quick. Typically, we, we pass on the second meeting in December, and this week it'll be, or this year it'll be December 21st. So do we have a motion to forego the December 21st meeting?
So moved.
All right, motion for, for Jim, second by Judy, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, move on, item number 14. Let's see, we have a financial report from Jim.
Yes, sir. So the first graph we have up there is the cumulative revenue through October.
Can we clear that up a little bit? I mean, I can't read the numbers on that thing. I know you can't either, or I'm either about asleep, one of the.
How many fingers?
There we go.
There we go.
Are you good now? Okay.
Good now.
So through October, revenue is at 66.5 million, which is roughly 2.5 million higher than last year at the same time, which is driven by property taxes and sales tax, are the two big components of that. Next slide, April. Expenditures, 47.4 million this year. You see it's up roughly 2 million from last year, which is COVID-related.
It's COVID-budget related.
Yes, sir. Next slide is the sales tax comparison, or I mean, the property tax. We see property taxes through September, we're at 53.1 million. Last year, we were at 51.6 million. And then the fourth slide is the sales tax. Alls we have so far is the month of July collections, which is 2.5 million, which you see is 2.2 million greater than last year at the same time. Or not, 200,000, sorry, not 2.2 million.
All right, any questions for Jim? Everyone said no. Thank you, Jim. All right, budget amendments provided, motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion, Mike, second, all in favor, say aye.
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 And do we really have a closed session?
I didn't put it on.
We need to do this, Jay? Oh, all right. So I move the board entering the closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1185, to consider a real estate transaction, and we'll get started as soon as we clear the room. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Do we have to come out of closed session first?
I thought we, oh, yeah, motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye, thank you.
Aye.